Of the 7/21/2020 City Council meeting. Our earlier discussion, in case you're just logging on, went a little long. So we're starting this one. We're going to start off with a roll call and we're going to kind of mix it up a little bit to get things moving. We're going to go right into our art project talking right after roll call and then we'll go into the city council agenda. So with that, maybe we start off with a roll call. Jessica?
Yes, Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Thank you. So we did just want to take a quick reorder of the agenda. We do have the announcement of the winners of our art contest under CM updates tonight. City manager updates and Colleen will go over those when we get to that item, but we do have two of our winners on who wanted a chance to speak and we wanted to give them the opportunity to be recognized by the council. We have Bryson and Amaya and Bryson was the winner of our age five and under. And Amaya was the winner of our age six through 10 art project and the cover of our budget book this year was actually drawn by Amaya. So call that if you want to go ahead and give the kids a chance to say something.
Hi. I'm Amaya and I just turned seven years old. I I drew this picture because I wanted to show we all work together as a community. We are stronger. Together.
Just go Bryson.
Hi, my name is Bryson and I want the coronavirus to be over and we are stronger together.
That's awesome. I'm ready for the coronavirus to be over too. Your guys' artwork was fantastic. We're very appreciative of what you guys put together. It's beautiful. So we're all giving you a big round of applause.
Thank you.
Thanks for speaking up. You guys make me feel like we're going to get through this faster. So I appreciate it. Jessica, is there anything else we're doing with the art? Do we go through a whole process?
Yeah, so Colleen's prepared to do that during city manager update. So we can go back to the beginning of the meeting, which I believe next is public forum.
Got it. All right. Let's do some public forum then.
Perfect. So first we have Suzanne Surer.
Thank you. This is Susan Swer and I just wanted to clarify some earlier remarks that might have been misconstrued. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify some earlier remarks that might have been misconstrued. First of all, I take COVID-19 very seriously. I'm in a high risk. A couple of high risk categories myself, so it's something that I pay very serious attention to. And I wanted to say that I hundred percent supported what the city did and was hugely complimentary towards all of the actions that were taken to coordinate the city efforts with the county efforts with the state efforts. My issues with closing the beaches is that, one, I just am concerned about the actions being taken outside of Scott Morrow's guidance or county or state guidance. And there was an effort to go to the media even before Gavin Newsom closed the beach and that's what I was objecting to. That we were discouraging tourists from coming to Half Moon Bay before there was actually any word from Gavin Newsom to close the beaches and I thought that was not acceptable. Thank you.
All right. Again, we find your comments very appreciative. Thank you for letting us know. All right, let's continue in public forum.
Yes, next we have Brent Turner.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and everyone. My name is Brent Turner. I'm a local real estate broker and I wanted to just make a few points this evening. I think it is necessary that we understand that there is something called the fog of war that occurs. And that people aren't really at their best right now because of the pressure created by the COVID virus and what it's doing to our lives. So we have to be sensitive to that. The San Mateo County officials have not been in step with the best practices of the best medical opinion. We're seeing San Mateo County in a unique category where it has what we might term terminal uniqueness. Where we think that the virus is going to magically give us courtesy and this is not the case. We are in an extreme emergency pandemic right now and we have to make sure that we are nimble to respond to COVID spikes. On the Fourth of July, we were lucky and we avoided that, but we can't go back and forth and vacillate. And these arguments that we need to make sure people can get to the beach and about the people's psychology and depression, they're all valid. Except not in the middle of an emergency COVID spike where just being around people is the great unknown. So when you really don't know what you're talking about, and I think we have to stipulate that we don't. And neither does the county except for maybe Morrow and he's not available. We have to err on the side of caution and be very nimble to close down the beaches. It's not that we're trying to take away beaches from anybody for goodness sake. It's to protect the public from spreading a virus that we know nothing about. And we need to stand in place to make sure that we have our arms around the data and that we're making best decisions. But we can't do that at this point because we're not fully aware of really what's going on in the information. So that's the reason why the public is pushing so heavily to close the beaches. It's just so we can live to fight another day. The public has put together a safety plan that we're going to forward over and there was some time spent and it's a skeleton, but at least it's a plan. And if we can operate with some speed and some clarity, I think we can beat this thing, but we have to, we might have to close down for 90 days. What did New Zealand do? And I know everybody's going to be in an uproar, but is this what we want to give to our children? Is that we can't get this together and be and attack this thing, that this is the end of our story? I don't think so and I'm a proud San Mateo native and I hope the rest of you join me. And I don't care how many organizations there are or people that can't be gotten a hold of. I say we go forward with full force and do what's best for the health and safety of our town. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Brent. Next, we have David Oblovy.
Great. Can everyone hear us?
Yep.
Hello, my name is Juna Oblovy and my name is Declan Oblovy. Together we started a company a short while ago to make small handmade signs that say BLM on them. We have been blown away by how many signs we sold in just a few short days and then how many people in our community support the Black Lives Matter movement. As part of learning about BLM, we came across images of cities that had painted the words Black Lives Matter in huge yellow letters on the streets. This started us thinking. Our mom's shop is right next to City Hall and the parking lot that runs towards the jail would be a perfect place for our own local Black Lives Matter tribute. We asked our dad how we could do this and he said that it is city property and the first thing to do was to speak to a city council at a city council meeting. We screamed and said no way before Papa said that this was a fantastic idea and we had a simple choice to make. Speaketh and beating or never see our PS score again. So we're speaking now even if we are completely terrified of being trapped forever without a gaming console to keep us busy. And what we'd like to ask you is to please coordinate with us to arrange for the painting of Black Lives Matter in the space as soon as possible. If the city cannot afford to paint the sign, we will volunteer to do the fundraising necessary to purchase the supplies needed to complete the work. In less than a week, we raised more than $350 making and selling handmade BLM signs. So we think we can probably raise enough money to do this project. So if you could please ask the city manager or public works director to contact our dad and coordinate with us to make this happen, we could really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time and help.
Good job, guys. I feel excellent. So I just want to follow that very quickly with first, thanks for my kids that took guts and I'm immensely proud of them. Second thing is we are all immensely lucky right now. We have been given the opportunity to redress 400 years of, I'm at a loss for words, but how we've treated minority communities in this country. And as you all know well, I am intimately familiar with the intricacies of government bureaucracy. In this case, I'd like to ask you to do whatever you need to do. We'll actually take it and run with it. We don't really even need a permit, but let's make this happen. It's been way too long and we're a small community, but that doesn't mean we don't matter. So thank you very much for listening and have a great night.
Cool. Thanks, the Oblovy family. Well done. Thank you. Good presentation, good speaking skills. You definitely speak better than your dad. So it's good to have you guys here. It's good. Appreciate it.
We have one more public speaker, Lauren Wilson. Lauren, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to echo off of David's children and say that I support the painting of Black Lives Matter. So I just wanted to make it heard that I am in full support of that.
Cool. Thanks Lauren. All right.
Sorry, Mayor, we have a few more hands popping up.
Start.
Stacy McCarthy, go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you, City Council. I want to amplify the Oblovy family's request. We're very excited by this youthful energy in our community and we can't wait for their request to be honored in the way that I believe that this council can. So I hope that you will take their request seriously and help us understand how we could support them as important members of our community. And secondly, Lauren and I and others represent over 100 families here on the coast. We formed a growing group called Coastside Families Taking Action. We wrote a letter after last month's law enforcement meeting to each member of the council, the vice mayor and the mayor. And we heard back from three members of the city council. We want to thank you for that. We're very interested in what's happening going forward with the law enforcement section that was discussed in June 16th. And we know a special committee was created to further that discussion. And I'm looking online every couple of days to see if there's more news on that. So if there's an update that we could hear, we're all very interested. Thank you very much.
Excellent. And yeah, real quick, I believe when we do have those meetings, we will be posting that stuff online. So you'll be able to access it. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that there's an item on your agenda on the consent calendar that formally establishes that subcommittee tonight.
Exactly. You're cool. Yep.
On Kerr, go ahead.
Hi there. We would like to register our support for the Oblovy family's initiative as well. We support the painting of Black Lives Matter on that plot and I'm here with my nine-year-old daughter, Mira, who also supports it.
Thank you. Roberta Gell, go ahead.
Roberta, you might be on mute.
I just want to express my gratitude to the Oblovy kids, Santa David, and express my support and that I would do anything to help them with this project. I think this is a magnificent opportunity for two young kids to show that a city can respond to a a request that comes from children and that really matters. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Roberta.
That looks to conclude public forum, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. All right, moving right along as we started late, I'm going to kind of try to move us a little quicker. So we're going to go to city manager updates to council.
Mayor Eisen, if I could, we actually do have two items listed under presentations.
Oh, we do? Yeah, that's right. Okay. Let's go to proclamations and presentations. Let's hit it.
Okay, let me, Len Erickson is going to provide the mid-coast updates. So let me find him. Okay, Len, go ahead. You're on.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you. A greetings to the Half Moon Bay City Council and Len Erickson stepping in for Claire Tutant, who usually gives a talk for him at the council. Is chair of the council and I really applaud the efforts and discussions that have been going on here, both relative to COVID and Black Lives Matter. For the past several months, our council has been most heavily involved in programs that stretch out for years. We call it Connect the Coastside and it has been moving forward through some Zoom meetings, but is coming now into some points of the process where I think reaching out to Half Moon Bay, which is occurring at some levels, is an important part of the process. I've had a couple of connections with Jill Licas, who's done good work on the highways from your end. So I just wanted to highlight this activity, which has been largely in the background, but over the next two or three months will probably result in some level of communication jointly from the county, from the MCC. So that's a quick update from the MCC.
Excellent. We really appreciate those updates too. Thank you so much for giving us a little sense of what's going on over there.
Thanks, Len.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jessica.
Sean, are you here with us for the school district update? Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks. Go ahead. We have Sean Nick Fettridge, the superintendent of Cabrillo Unified, to give us an update on the next school year.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for doing the work you do and I want to thank everybody for the invitation here tonight to present a little bit on our return to schools planning. Since the last time I spoke to city council, we did convene an opening school steering committee that was based up of families and staff and community members. And we also had focus groups representing PTO leaders, parent teacher organization leaders, other staff members. And we also had surveys and we've been doing all this and had a bit of a technical difficulty at our last board meeting where we had some difficulty getting everybody into the room and then were able to resolve that. But by the time that we got our budget presentation done and by the time it turned midnight, we were only through page 35 of an 85-page document. So there's been a lot of planning done, particularly with elementary focus groups and secondary focus groups to look at how the return to school would happen. And we were recommending a hybrid model where students would be on campus certain parts of the week and have remote learning the other parts of the week and that we would start school two weeks late and transition from remote learning full-time into that hybrid model. And then Friday, the governor gave us a clear mandate, which ironically doesn't apply to San Mateo County as I'm sure you understand. Though I understand that council member or county supervisor has now suggested that maybe this is just a matter of time. So we are in some ways back to the drawing board. We will go back to our board on Thursday. We will continue discussing the plan. And if indeed we are on the county watch list, our plan would be to follow the guidelines provided us by the state and the governor and the state epidemiologist and the county office education and the county health doctor. And I just want to reiterate what I heard from Mayor Eisen earlier, that whether you're talking about closing the beaches or closing schools, you're going to have people on either end of that continuum. People who want to completely close, never go back to school until we have a vaccine and people who are saying we can't get our kids back into full-time instruction soon enough. We need to do that for their social emotional health. Somewhere in between there is the truth and what we must do pragmatically to open the school to be safe. I have a commitment and a professional obligation to take care of our families and our staff and the community. And considering the idea, I heard this the other day from a state representative, if we can't have restaurants open, how can we have our schools open? People will suggest that the science is out there. I don't think people know the science quite yet. We're getting all kinds of conflicting opinions every new day. And as much as we want to get students back in school, I think our teachers want that too. I also have a commitment for our employees and I know that many of them, quite frankly, are understandably fearful, especially if you're in our age bracket. You know, we could be at higher risk and we also know that our students could take home this to families. And so this is a big discussion for the school district. It's a big discussion for the city. I have compassion for all who are suffering. And I just want to say that we will have another board meeting on Thursday and we'll discuss this. But many districts in up and down the state are sort of mandated to close. Over 30 counties, I think San Francisco joined on late Friday or Saturday. Every Bay Area district, every Bay Area county is on the list except for San Mateo County. And again, I hear that we may could be going on that. If we go on that list, we will have to follow really clear guidelines from the state. People have discussed, well, elementary schools could apply for waivers, but we've also heard that that may only be K-8 districts. It is a very difficult rule set that we are following. We will continue to look to interacting with the public, with our teachers and with our other classified staff, with our families, with the opening steers, opening school steering committee and there's something for everyone here. I think we can all prepare to be disappointed and we can all prepare to need to take caution. The governor stated very clearly, we have to wear masks, we have to have social distancing, we have to limit gatherings. But now he's also said very clearly, if we're on the county watch list, our schools must be closed and must be looking at statewide metrics before we can open and those would be 14 days. So I'm happy to take any questions. This is all very complicated. It's very new to all of us and it is a whole new spin on things after last week.
I'm really appreciative of you coming on and talking with us and the interaction between the city council and the school district and the increasing communication between our two districts, I think is phenomenal. You're going through some major times. Obviously we are as well. I agree. There's continuums. There's all different sides. We're both dealing with, there's budget constraints we're both dealing with. It's quite a time. And it's hard. So I appreciate you coming on and I would actually ask if the public wouldn't mind if we need to take a question, let's do it. And if not, you can bring that up at a school board meeting and we can move on because our meetings always go till midnight and we're going to try to like see if we can get done before 1:00 AM is our goal. So that's our thing. So we're going to move onward. Appreciate the update. Are there, is there one major question that needs to be asked?
I have one hand raised.
Let's do the one hand. Here we go.
Brent Turner, go ahead.
Yes, I was just wondering if the consent agenda, if the item that related to this issue would be to the COVID was going to be pulled from the consent agenda, will there be a chance for public discussion at that time or can I pose a quick statement now?
No, you can, we'll go through the consent calendar. You can pull what you want. You can talk about what you want. When we get there, it'll be all time.
Great. I just wanted to mention to the good superintendent that to thank him for his work from the public and just to mention everything that we were talking about earlier airing on the side of caution when you lack clarity on an issue like this. I think that goes triple when children are involved. So thanks to everybody. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, Sean, you're doing great work. We appreciate you. We really just appreciate what you're doing for the community. So keep it up.
Well, it is a very challenging time. I will say I have such respect for what you all do. In particular, I know Karen Decker is potentially presenting later on our two plus two committee. And I look forward to working with you however I can going forward and it is tough times. It is challenging times. I know we all if we stay strong and keep working together. So thank you very much.
Cool. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay. Are there any other proclamations or presentations?
There are none.
Good. Yep. For Mayor's announcements, I just, I do want to say Fourth of July, you know, myself, staff, Bob, I'm sure council as well. I didn't get to talk to them that much about it. That was a lot of effort to make the beaches closed for Fourth of July. You know, somebody mentioned the interviews that I did with with the news stations. I think I interviewed with, you know, seven to 10 stations. I don't, I didn't even remember because I was just going through the motions to get the word out as best as we can. It kind of, I thought Friday, you started to still see people coming, but by Saturday, the word was out and Sunday definitely. And I love it. I still have people tell me, well, you know, I went down to the beach and I saw one person on the beach on Sunday and it's kind of like, well, we reduced the amount of people that came to the beach by 99.9% and you're complaining about one person that was on the beach? It's kind of, the public is an interesting thing. But it was such a good job from everybody's effort and you know, I saw staff on the weekend. I sat with staff on the weekend. We saw people, even as we told people to not walk through past us, they walked right by us and wanted to experience it for themselves. But then the police got them on the beach with their, with the ATVs and the motorcycles. So it was just an unbelievably well-coordinated effort with eight different agencies involved. And I'm just appreciative to be a part of such a great team from council to staff, all the way across the board and really all the other agencies that came on board and you know, made that happen as well. So I'm just appreciative of that and I'll move on from that. Is there anything from the report out from the recent closed session meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session just up to one item earlier this evening. That was a labor negotiations item to provide direction to its negotiators, Lisa Lopez, admin services director and Bob Misbit, city manager, regarding the employee organization represented managers. There was no reportable action taken at that meeting. I will just note just for the public that there is a labor item on tonight's agenda with the other represented group that's on the consent calendar. A side letter to amend the MOU and that's with the city's local 39 labor group.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. And let's move on from there to city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have several updates tonight for you. But before we kick into the first one, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge that it's the beginning of the new fiscal year. Happy New Year to everyone. The council has not met in five weeks. We did have a nice little break there. But you might recall and it might seem like a long time ago, five weeks. That was before the end of our fiscal year, June 30th, and your council did take the action that night to approve a balanced budget. So since then, we've been working to close the books. That's a very important next step that the administrative services department takes after after the year closes. And this year, it's obviously very important because for us to produce a balanced budget and After the year closes and this year it's obviously very important because for us to produce a balanced budget and the. Work that your council had to do to get us there was very critical and estimating obviously was very tricky. So. It is our intention to have a financial update at your August meeting. Hopefully we'll have some information about how the books closed and that'll help to start paint the picture. Of whether we were right or wrong on some of our estimates and predictions and how we're looking for next year. But I just wanted to acknowledge that. And so as we start the first, the the new year, I also want to acknowledge that I think we're really. Hitting the ground running. And I just wanted to acknowledge we're about to get into it and we've already been at this now for two hours plus, but just the breadth. Of the items on the council's agenda tonight. I counted eighteen action items. Eight updates. I think it's the most items that have been on the council's agenda since I've been here as your city manager. And it's really interesting that here we are, first of the year, and as noted. This crisis is just engulfing all of us and it's complicated and it's very hard. But on top of that. Other business does continue and I just want to acknowledge the council, you approved the budget, you gave us direction for what to. Prioritize for this fiscal year and so we appreciate that and we're hitting the ground running. And I want to acknowledge staff. If you look over the items, it's pretty amazing. All the items that are on your agenda tonight. They cover all five of your council's priorities. All five priorities. Are somehow covered in the items that are before you tonight. On the consent calendar, there's like three grants. That are being applied for a housing grant, our annual cops grant, hundred thousand, a lot of that will go to overtime for the police department. We're also setting the stage to get FEMA reimbursement for COVID. All that works going on. You're approving your five year CIP tonight, which has ten million dollars budgeted for just this fiscal year in capital improvements. We're entering into a license agreement with PG&E, a five year license. So that they can do a customer service center at the library. If there's any power shut offs. Another reality and possibility that could strike us during this pandemic. And then onward on the agenda, there's going to be a cleanup on beach items again. The highlight of that will be eliminating plastics on the beaches. That's a big deal. We're setting up the sewer rates. For the next five years so that the sewer fund is solvent and can and can be there for all the sewer expenses. Of course, there's also an item where we're proposing an increase in TOT. And then finally, a huge capital project, the Highway One South project has been in the making for eight years, eight years. It's a four million dollar plus project. The recommendation is to award the contract. Staff received another extra four hundred and forty thousand dollars for that project. From the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, which is just incredible. So I just wanted to acknowledge the breadth of the work going on. We should all pat ourselves on the back, especially your council for the leadership and the staff for all the good work in the middle of this pandemic. So that's my intro. The first item up, if Jessica would hit the slides is is we are. Going to do an update on our COVID response. And obviously, we've already touched on this in numerous ways. Comments have been made, but we'll make a few additional comments. We'll try to keep them brief. And I'll turn it over to Jessica and then I'll finish up with some final comments on the Fourth of July as well. Jessica?
Thanks, Bob. We actually did reorder the city manager updates to put the art contest winners first. So Colleen will go first and then I'll follow.
Great.
All right. Okay, so as good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, as Jessica mentioned, we are going to. Reveal the winners of the Wave of Strength Youth Art Contest. You met two of the winners earlier tonight and they. You know, just brought smiles to all of our faces. So choosing a winner was very difficult for our judges judges as each piece was done so thoughtfully and beautifully. We could really tell how much time and effort the youth in our community put into their pieces to show us what strength looks like to them. Each artist in this contest showed us that there is beauty in even the hardest of times. Thank you again to all of the participants for their submissions. Without further ado, let me present the winners for each category. Oh, 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 no, this is wrong. So for our five and under category, we have Bryson, who you met earlier. He is age four and for the six to ten category, we have Amaya, who is his sister. She, as we know, just turned seven. And then for the ages eleven to fourteen category, the winner is Cammy B, who is in ninth grade. And so it says in the rose, it says you are not worth it and then you're a loser, you suck. But then the sunflower comes and says, I am worth it. You cannot break me down. And then the winner for the category of fifteen to eighteen is Sitzlali and she is sixteen years old. For our budget book, we also, we put all of the images that were submitted in throughout all our budget book. And so we have one on the front and the back cover and so Amaya, who was the winner of the ages six to ten category. She is on the cover of the budget book and then on the back is Chloe B, age eleven. So just congratulations to both of them. And thank you again to the winners for their submissions. They were chosen because they truly embody what strength looks like to them during this time. And now I am going to go through all of the submissions one more time, just so everyone can see them. So Bryson was the only category or the only submission for ages five and under. And so that was this one. And then for ages six to ten. Now the. There is supposed to be, is it the fifteen to eighteen? Oh, no, this is the, sorry, eleven to fourteen. This is the Chloe M, who was the back of the budget book. So just switch those. This is fifteen to eighteen now. So just as a wrap up, the winners will all have their pieces printed on banners that will be hung on light poles outside of City Hall and MacDutra Park. We have created a webpage where all of the winners artwork is and that is. WWW H M B city dot com slash Wave of Strength. All of the artwork is there, including the winners. When 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 City Hall reopens again, the runners will be invited for a tour. And meeting with our city manager and mayor. And all artwork will be posted to our social media channels for all of our followers to see. Additionally, this year's budget book features the youth art submissions. You can view the budget book at the link here. And thank you once again to everyone who participated. I personally had a great joy. Doing this project and seeing what all the wonderful art that came from it. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations to everyone. And now I will continue talking about a different topic.
Hey, great job, Bobby.
Comments?
Yeah, I'll say great job and thanks for organizing that. And just a shout out to, what is it, Pat Black, I believe. On the Parks and Rec Commission for being one of the judges and thank you for your participation.
Anyone else? Okay, so the Youth Leadership Institute in part with San Mateo County. Behavioral Health and Recovery Services are have put together a project. And these two organizations are hoping to change the narrative around mental health by collecting stories, poetry, mini autobiographies. Interviews and artworks centered around what it means to understand your mental health. The goal of the anthology is to highlight the mental health experiences of all people in San Mateo County. Especially highlighting transition aged youth fifteen to twenty five. And make space for people to share their stories about mental health in order to break down stigmas around mental health and increase access to services. To find out more information about this project, you can email Ruby Salazar, whose email is on the screen. And you can also visit this website, which includes all of the information and how. Eligibility requirements for the anthology series. And this has been posted on all of our. City social media channels as well. So you can reference it there too. So if there's any other questions. Okay.
Don't have any questions? Great program.
All right. So I believe Jessica is going now.
Yes, thank you.
So I I have to go back a little bit. Get to look at some art. So sorry. Okay.
Thanks, Colleen, and good evening, council and community. We wanted to provide a COVID update and the status of current affairs in San Mateo County surrounding the pandemic. On June seventeenth, San Mateo County was granted a variance from the state. This allowed the county to open additional sectors and the overarching. Local shelter orders expired with a new order issued aligning the county with the state's reopening plan. Since then, the state has seen an increase in the positivity rate and hospitalization statewide. On July thirteenth, Governor Newsom stated he was scaling back reopening and ordered the closure of certain indoor sectors statewide that had been allowed to open. The sectors listed on this slide were required to close indoor operations and operate outdoors only. All bars indoor and outdoor were required to close as well. On the same day, the governor also ordered that for counties on the state's monitoring list for three days or more, which covered about thirty of the state's fifty eight counties at the time. Seize operations of the additional sectors listed unless they could operate outside. Yesterday, the state issued outdoor guidance for personal care services, including hair salons and barber shops. San Mateo County remains the only county in the Bay Area who is not on the state's monitoring list. However, it is expected that the state will that the county will be added this week, which will necessitate the closure of the sectors listed. So the State Department of Public Health looks at a variety of factors when determining when to add a county to its monitoring list. The three main areas of concern are elevated disease transmission, increased hospitalizations. And capacity of the hospitals to handle that increase. This slide covers a general overview of the pandemic and its effects here in San Mateo County. As of yesterday, they have been, there have been four thousand six hundred and seventy four total cases and a hundred and forty four deaths in San Mateo County. And of those roughly a hundred and twenty positive cases on the coast side. With eighty eighty five of those cases in Happen Bay specifically. These two bullets are taken from the County Board of Supervisors meeting today. And show the two specific areas that are of concern and will likely land us on the monitoring list this week. Watching the case rate and whether that trends up or trends down will be the determining factor for the state public health department. To keep us moving forward, the county and our local officials asked the public to continue to social distance, avoid gatherings, wash your hands, wear your masks. And be diligent. Now I will turn it over to Bob, who will cover the recent Fourth of July beach closures.
Thank you, Jessica, and I won't belabor this because numerous comments have been been made, but here are some photos. That we thought we would share, a photo of the empty beach. A sign indicating that the beaches are closed. And then staff was set up at at key points. Obviously, the sheriff was working double duty. They had deputies on the beach as well. It's up above on the bluffs. We also had staff working overtime at both Poplar and at Kelly. And here's a photo of the entrance at Kelly where we had staffs set up. Park closed and that's where we were doing our best to turn people away from the beach and give them other opportunities. So I'll just say one last time, I agree with all the comments that have been made, that it was very successful. I agree a hundred percent that it was a success and I agree with the mayor in his statements that it was a lot of work. And then I will also just go back and underscore the comments I made when the mayor asked earlier about the chain of events that led to it. And the critical event in my mind that led to to the decision that was made and that was when. The governor decided to close parking lots and that just seemed untenable to me, given our experience. And so we had no choice. We had to close the beaches once that decision was made. It seems to me that the governor was receiving lots of input. And it seemed like the governor at that moment in time, based on all the input that he was receiving. Had to do something about the beaches. It was a perfect storm coming up. It was a Fourth of July weekend. The fourth was on a Saturday. Friday was been a holiday. It was looking like perfect weather on the weekend. And the numbers had started going up about two weeks, three weeks earlier, maybe even longer. But it was clear that the governor was going to come out and make a statement and start using his dimmer switch, as he calls it. So that's just an underscore again of the success and appreciation to everyone that was involved in 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 that. The next discussion that we started to hear comments on from council and public. Was well, if it was so successful, you know, would we consider doing it again? And what would be the circumstances by which we would do it again? And as has been mentioned by many people, these are very tough issues. So I put up this slide to illustrate that point. This is a slide I found. There's numerous. Versions of this out there. This was done by the Texas Medical Association. My point is not to make a case whether they're accurate on these activities. They have put all these activities into risk categories. My point is not to make a case of whether I agree with it or not. Others could certainly do that. But assuming that it was well done and experts in the health community put this together. My point is back to the challenge that's in front of us and I think Sean made the point very well when he talked about. Schools and the mayor made the point very well. When he was talking about people having different values and different opinions. And here is the problem. It comes down to a risk assessment. And as you can see, they've listed all these activities, hope the council and the public can see them. And they've assigned a risk number to those activities from one to ten. And you can see the high risk activities right now, for the most part, are activities that are closed in the state of California. Eating at a buffet, going to an amusement park, going to a movie theater, going to a bar. These are items that the governor recently reclosed, as Jessica just mentioned. At the other end of the spectrum on the low risk is are things that are people are doing right now. Pumping gasoline, opening the mail, getting takeout food, et cetera. I think the challenge, of course, comes in the evaluation of these risks and when you evaluate one activity. The understanding is that if you close certain activities, then people are going to do other activities. And so unless it's a complete shutdown, unless people are staying in their homes. When people have the opportunity to make choices, risk choices for themselves on activities that they'll do. It's very possible that they might choose a higher. it's very possible that they might choose a higher risk category if you close something that's a lower risk. So this is, I think, where the challenge be, is a problem and is very difficult. And you'll see that going to the beach is on the list, and it's a five. It's right in the middle. Uh, no wonder it's so hard. Uh, it's right in the middle of the spectrum, and there are activities right now that are the same score, like going to a backyard barbecue or having dinner at someone's house. And evidence, we're seeing evidence now that people are getting complacent and doing those things. In fact, Scott Morrow came out with a statement recently acknowledging that, in his opinion, complacency is part of the problem now, and people are doing those kind of, kind of social activities with friends or families that can be really dangerous. And so I guess my point here is not that I have the answer, but it's interesting that going to the beach is in the same category, the same risk level of those two. And so the point is that these choices are very hard, because if you close the beach, you have to imagine those people that would go to the beach on that day are going to be doing something else. They don't disappear. So they may stay in their house, but they may also go over to someone else's house for dinner, or they may go to a backyard barbecue. Uh, they may go swim in a public pool. Um, so that just makes the choice really hard, I think. And so I wanted to make that point. I thought the fourth was a, a complete success, and it was a success because we were backed by all of our partners, the county, the state, as the mayor mentioned, there were eight entities involved. And so my guidance, uh, on the simple question of would we do this again? Very simple. If the state did what they did again, I would highly recommend doing it again. Uh, if our, if Scott Morrow recommended closing the beaches or the parking lots, I would be the first to recommend it to your council. And by the way, I would prefer not to use the emergency authority I have. At any time we have the ability to schedule a council meeting, uh, I will be the first to do that. Uh, the reason that, uh, under the emergency declaration I have that is sometimes, uh, time is of the essence on these decisions, and so it's better that, uh, the, the, the decisions can be made if a council meeting can't be scheduled. Uh, but it would always be my preference to be in lockstep with the community and the city council on those decisions. Uh, the last comment I'll make on that is, on the opposite side of it, uh, I do not support the idea of the city closing our beach, beach if state parks does not close their beach. Back to the risk on the spectrum here, I just don't see that that is successful at all in what we're trying to accomplish, which is people not spreading the virus and saving lives. Because the message for the Fourth of July was all beaches are closed. All beaches are closed, and people didn't come. Uh, if you say some beaches are closed, people will come to the coast. And what we've done then is we've closed Poplar Beach, and everyone's going to go to the state beaches, and there's going to be a higher density of people on less beach space. So that's my thinking on this, and I know, uh, a, a, a member of the public asked if, uh, if there could be comments on the, uh, consent calendar item, which is the council, we're recommending that the council ratify the decision that was made on the fourth. And Mr. Mayor, you said that there would be, so I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, and I assume the council will have further comments, uh, when that consent calendar item comes up. Uh, so that completes our COVID, uh, response update for now.
No, I appreciate all those comments, and, uh, I think, I think you did a great job, and I think you saved some lives. So I appreciate it. Um, and, uh, I, I, we will get to that topic again when we get to item, uh, I believe it's one J. I'll have to look at it again, consent calendar J, but, um, thank you guys for all the work that's being done. Very much appreciated. All right, so we've done the city manager updates. Is there anything else there?
Uh, we do have three more short ones. Uh, the next one is Karen Decker, and she, this has also been, um, referenced tonight by, by our superintendent, Sean. Uh, we, and you have also mentioned it, Mayor, that the relationship is very strong with the school right now, how important that is. Uh, there was a recent, uh, education subcommittee meeting. We call it the two by two, two members of the council, two members of the school board. Uh, and I'll let Karen, uh, go through, uh, that meeting that occurred recently.
Thank you very much, Bob. I just want to confirm my audio. Can I, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and community members. My name is Karen Decker, and I will be delivering your education subcommittee update. This is one of our relatively newer subcommittees, having had its first meeting in November of twenty nineteen. The second meeting occurred June twenty-ninth, prompting this update, and I will briefly summarize those two convenings. Current district board representatives are President Kimberly Hines and Clerk to the Board Mary Beth Alexander. City council representatives are Mayor Eisen and Vice Mayor Brownstone. Uh, the group's purpose was discussed thoroughly at that first meeting, and four main goals emerged. Both agencies wanted to focus on impact. Um, we can do good work independently, but we can do so much more together. Communication, something that can always be improved. Provide a forum for understanding the issues of the other agencies, and facilitate thoughtful strategic collaboration. It was a great conversation, and I'd like to acknowledge former board president Sophia Lane and council member Roarback, who served on the commission last winter, and they helped fine tune these goals that you see today. Next slide, please. In addition to defining the purpose and goals, the subcommittee discussed how sharing facilities and reevaluating current and future programming would be helpful. Um, little did we know what was just around the corner with COVID. Um, but in this context, we did talk about how standard rental agreements were not considered applicable, and there was mutual interest in exploring a joint use agreement, which I'll touch on a little bit more in a moment. Um, we did talk about Latino outreach in the broader context of taking a holistic approach to serving underrepresented communities. We also talked about leveraging resources, including expertise and capacity beyond our own agencies in the business sector and in the nonprofit sector. Um, within sustainability, the group discussed ways to partner such as co-applying for grants. Um, we discussed fleet electrification, power storage, water conservation, and, and so much more. And you'll see more from sustainability with this group. Um, in discussing traffic, uh, we talked about capital improvement projects, and there was a mutual desire to better understand the problem and the generational needs for traffic management. The city committed to recruiting for youth vacancy on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, uh, which was successful. Um, and then highlights from our most recent meeting just a few weeks ago. Um, so these first two bullets were essential, um, to acknowledge at the June meeting because monumental historic events took place between the timing of these two meetings. Um, the international pandemic, the Black Lives Matter movement, the death of George Floyd. I mean, there was value in just pausing and learning about the other agencies' responses in order to just proceed with the rest of the agenda and figure out how to partner moving forward. The joint use agreement was something that we were hopeful that we would have ready for the June meeting. Um, and city and district staff met, and they took best practices compiled from Change Lab Solutions and produced a solid draft of the joint use agreement. Um, but then when COVID happened, uh, there was a pause, and we are planning to retain what is still relevant and will proceed more in earnest once school and city facilities are open to the public. Um, and of course, any finalized document would need to go before both governing bodies. Regarding sustainability, staff introduced the city's disposable foodware ordinance and the intent to ban all single-use plastic bottles from city facilities and parks, and gave an update on Earth Year with a request to collaborate on future material. And both were met with great enthusiasm and a desire to move forward on these initiatives together. Regarding traffic, staff provided an update on CIP, um, Capital Improvement Program, and explored the concept of opening up school parking lots for things like seasonal visitors or even paid parking to help with beach access, which, um, I'm sure was discussed in that earlier study session. Next slide. Um, so here's a preview of future agenda items. I won't go through them all, but I'll just give you a moment to review them. Um, I will say there was no shortage of overlapping topics and goals and a desire to see them realized, which is all the more possible through collaboration. The first four items that you see were added at the last meeting, and the last three were carryovers. Um, and I think that you will continue to see because they were just that important. And I just want to acknowledge the school board and Superintendent Sean McFetrich, which we heard from ear, earlier, and Rosie Acosta, um, just for their responsiveness, their flexibility, and their professionalism throughout this partnership, um, despite the great challenges that they face. And then finally, um, just an invitation, please join us at our next meeting. It's taking place on October first from three to five. You can always ask, access the agenda and meeting logistics on the city's homepage. If you think of any ideas or clarifying questions, or if a virtual format is not your comfort zone, but you'd like to reach out to someone, please don't hesitate to contact me. I've included my email address below, kdecker@hmbcity.com. And at this time, I would welcome any comments or questions.
All right, well, Karen, great, great work on, on, on bridging the gap continually between the city and the school district. I think we have come a long way, uh, towards working together and, uh, communally moving in the same direction. So I appreciate the efforts there, and I'll just open it up real quick to anybody else, if anybody wants to say anything.
I just want to say, I just want to say, great work. Um, I'm, I'm very pleased that this is, uh, a growing relationship. And I think, um, Karen's doing a, a really nice job and tying it all together for us. So thank you to Karen, and thank you to the city manager and our, um, two-on-two team.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, exactly.
We have two more short updates. Mr. Mayor, Jill Ikis will give an update on the process and the schedule, uh, that's ahead of us, uh, coming up into fall to get the, uh, LU, uh, 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 LUP amendment, LCP, I'm sorry, uh, completed. And then after that, Jennifer Chong and our, uh, Energy Resilient Program. Jill?
Hi, good evening. Hello, Mayor Eisen and council and community members. I am happy to announce that we are coming back with your fully revised Planning Commission draft of the land use plan. This is the policy portion of the local coastal program. And, uh, we will have a public hearing on August twenty-fifth. The document is going out at the end of this week, and to prepare everyone for the public hearing, the only item on the agenda on July twenty-eighth will be a study session with the Planning Commission. And we're going to start early. We're going to, um, copy what, uh, you have been doing with your early study sessions. We're going to start at six. Our goal is to give folks time to speak while we're still fresh. It's, there's so much to update, uh, on this document. You know, the draft has been out for about a year. We received a lot of comments. They're all documented, and they've been responded to thoroughly, and we're very, very pleased to be bringing this back. Um, I'm highlighting here something a little bit unusual. So, um, we care a lot about our stakeholders, uh, when we're, uh, looking at a comprehensive update to, um, a land use plan. And we are trying to schedule time with folks who have participated a lot and have wanted to stay engaged. And of course, we offer to meet with people, um, who, who are just learning about it as well, and I'm receiving phone calls about that. Um, typically, we meet in the conference room. We're not going to be able to do that. So we are, um, having staff reach out and contacting, uh, different folks and offering, uh, Zoom meeting slots. And I also do sidewalk meetings at City Hall. It's, uh, outside of City Hall, I should say. You gotta wear your mask, and, um, so do I, and we figure it out. So we will make sure that everyone gets to do what they need to do for communication at every level through this process. Uh, so July twenty-eighth, August twenty-fifth, contact us. Uh, the planhmb.org website has been refreshed and is ready to accept our, uh, documents that we're polishing up right now. Make up one more slide. Thank you, and then we will see you, and as soon as we can. We're, we're, uh, preparing for September. Um, this is just a snippet of one of the, the new maps that is coming forward. And if you have any questions about it, please let me know. We will make sure that council gets a hard copy of this document at the right time so that you have plenty of time to review it. Um, we will let it simmer for days and have pureled hands, and I'll bring them to you. Well, we're going to make this work. Um, very inclusive meetings. The Planning Commission's excited. They've been, uh, doing a really nice job hosting, um, their Zoom meetings and making sure that public comment is meaningful. And if you have any, um, concern or interest, uh, or giving us any advice about that, because you guys are experts, please, please let me know. So I know you've waited a while, and, um, I want you to know, we, we are just delighted to be bringing this back to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll open this to council, because I feel like there's a lot of, uh, people that might want to comment on this, because I know, so, uh, Harvey, I'm sure you want to say something. Deborah, you go through the whole, go through the whole gamut.
Um, the meeting is, uh, running late, uh, so I'm not going to say very much, except the land use plan is the most important document that the council is going to have to eventually rule on as well as the coastal commission. It's going to set the tone for what the city is going to look like for the next twenty years. So it's really important, and all public stakeholders really should get involved in making sure that we do exactly what we want to do to keep Half Moon Bay the coastal's place that we all love. So please come.
Very good. Deborah?
I'd like to say thank you to Jill and her staff for this megathon of a job. This has been a huge, huge undertaking, and one that's required many, many more hours than you're being paid for. So we appreciate it, and I know the city is going to be very, very much the better city because of all the work you've done. So thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say plus one for, uh, Deborah Penrose and Harvey. Um, really important stuff. It's going to be really important for the public to follow this because, um, it's basically our, our city's blueprint for the future. Not always, you know, hot and sexy stuff, but, uh, really important. And we're already seeing it taking shape in some of the changes we've made downtown. And we're starting to get new development applications consistent with it. So I think it's, I'm kind of a nerd, but I think it's really exciting, and I know that staff's been doing a heroic job. So I just want to say thank you. Look forward to it.
Cool. And then, uh, I'll just finish. I, I ran on the, uh, when I, when I ran for council four years ago, this is one of the things that I ran on, was trying to get this done. So I just want to really thank, uh, mostly the, the subcommittees, uh, the Planning Commission and the subcommittee. There's a lot of work going into this from a lot of different stakeholders, and I just appreciate the amount of community involvement that's been going on for it to get to this point, uh, and now to the next levels. And I hope the community stays as involved as it has been, and the people that have contributed before continue to contribute. And then we get new members, um, to contribute as well as we finish this off. So thank you so much. Um, obviously Jill and the staff, fantastic job, I very much appreciate this, and, uh, I'm, I'm very impressed. I'm, I'm very excited to get to the next stage. So thank you, everybody. Yeah, agreed. Energy resiliency.
That's me. Uh, good evening, city council, members of the community. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I'm the Public Works Program Manager. Um, I'm pleased to be here today to share some energy resiliency programs that are available to Half Moon Bay residents. Uh, for the purposes of time, I'll just be providing a very brief snapshot of three different programs that are available to Half Moon Bay residents. Um, and I encourage that, um, that anyone that's interested in knowing more about these programs to visit our website, uh, hmbcity.com slash energy resilient. The link will be in my final slide. So the first program that I'd like to highlight is Power on Peninsula Medical. Uh, this is an effort by our partners at Peninsula Clean Energy. Their purpose is to identify San Mateo County residents that rely on electricity for medical needs and are either living in high fire threat areas or have been impacted by two or more PSP of, PSPS events, um, public safety power shut-off events, which pretty much includes all Half Moon Bay residents. So if you qualify, um, PCE is offering free portable batteries or solar and battery installations, depending if, you know, you're a renter or a homeowner. So a really great benefit, um, to our residents. Depending if, you know, you're a renter or a homeowner. So a really great benefit um to our residents that are. You know, having to worry about the PSPS events and fire seasons that are right down the line. Um, the link to enroll in the program is on the slide. Or if you have questions, you can also reach out to the senior cosiders who are actually working with PCE. On doing some local outreach on this specific program. Uh, next slide please. So the second program I'd like to highlight is the Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program. This is being spearheaded by the Center for Independence. Um, this program has a similar target audience of San Mateo County residents. With electricity dependency for medical needs. However, their services go beyond just providing batteries. Although they do also coordinate um battery deliveries as well. Uh, their focus is really on. Assessing the need of the household, also getting households signed up for the medical baseline for PG and E. Um, and just making sure that these households have the different type of resources that they need to get through a PSPS event safely. Um, again, the enrollment link for this program is on the slide as well as the contact information at the bottom. And then again, the final slide that I have will have a link um to our webpage that has all of this information. So this, I'm going through this really briefly again for um the matter of time. Next slide please. Uh, and then the final program that I just wanted to highlight tonight is PG and E's self-generation incentive program. Or S chip. This program provides financial incentives to customers that want to either install battery storage on their property. Or in the case of uh non-residential customers, also um energy generation such as solar panels. Uh, the level of incentive varies based on your income status, location, medical essential needs. Um, and the likelihood to be affected by PSPS event. Um, and it's a little bit complicated. So I would just encourage anyone that's interested in this program to really dig into some of the details on their website. Um, one caveat for this program is that I did check the funding availability prior to this meeting. And most of the funding availability um that was currently allocated has already been subscribed. Meaning that there's nothing currently available. Um, that said, there are a lot of tiers to this program. And they are expecting another round of funding to come out. And they're um accepting waitlist requests now. So if, you know, this is something that you're thinking about doing, um, you should hop on it now, put a waitlist application in. So if the funding becomes available, you're at the top of that list. Um, and you have a much higher chance to get funding for your project. Um, and then slide please. So this is the finals, my final slide. Again, um, there's. A website that we've developed on the Half Moon Base, um, hmbcity.com. That has all of the links, all of the information that I just flew through. So I apologize for the brevity, but hopefully this at least gives people an idea of some of the energy resiliency programs that are available. With PSPS um coming right down the line. And um, this hopefully provides a convenient location for folks to get the resources and information. That they need in these programs. So with that, I'm happy to leave this light up just for a couple more seconds and take any questions from the council.
Uh, Jennifer, not a question, but a comment. The Peninsula Clean Energy has allocated ten million dollars. For energy resiliency programs, including what you've shown, but there's more to it. Uh, trying to uh have hospitals and uh senior centers, other places available. So that uh in the event of uh a power shut-off, uh, there will be uh access to. Uh, life-saving uh electricity. So that your uh electrical bill. Is going to pay for a lot of these uh resiliency programs. So PCE is a really good program, I gotta tell you.
Yes, definitely.
All right. Thanks for all the work you're doing on the energy resiliency, Jessica or Jennifer. I appreciate it. Okay, um, let's move into uh, uh, is there anything else before I move on, Mr. City Manager? And I'll take.
Mr. Mayor, uh, no, that is it for updates. Um, that's all we have. You can move on to the consent calendar.
Perfect. Well, you guys are obviously doing a lot of work. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. And uh, thanks to the staff. And you started that off beautifully by giving a good presentation. Um, but there is, it's just amazing to see what staff's working on. So appreciate it. Uh, onto the consent calendar. Um, there is an item I would like to pull right out of the gate. Uh, which is one J. Um, and for, for me, yeah, I guess we, both of staff, very short staff presentation. And then we can open it up for public, for comment amongst council and the public. And we can get further into that. Uh, are there any other items anybody would like to pull? Both from the public and city, uh, city council? All right, if there are not, may we entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item one A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B, warrants for the month of June twenty twenty. Item one C, LEAP Planning Grants Program Application. Uh, item one D, side letter to amend the current memorandum of understanding. With the International Union of Operating Engineers Stationary Local Thirty-nine AFL-CIO. Item one E, license agreement between the city of Half Moon Bay and Pacific Gas and Electric Company. For use of the Half Moon Bay library as a customer service center during public safety power shut-off events. Item one F, approval of five-year capital improvement program. Item one G, authorization to apply for funding for the State of California Infrastructure Bank. And reimburse expenses related to the purchase and improvements of a eighty stone pine road. Item one H, amendment to agreement with the Lou Edwards Group for revenue consulting assistance. Item one I, final acceptance of the Poplar Beach Vertical Access Project, CIP number five ninety-seven. Item one J, confirm order of the Director of Emergency Services.
And then that's been.
Oh, that's big. Sorry. Okay. Item one K, citizens' option for public safety grant program. This school year twenty twenty twenty-one. Item one L, mayor's list of city council representatives and designated assignments for twenty twenty revised. Item one M, designation of agents to engage with the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Governor's Office of Emergency Services.
Wait, second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, and Jessica, we do the honors. And Debbie, thank you for reading all that out.
Uh, yes, council member at it?
I.
Council member.
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And then so to item one J, um, can we do a quick one-minute staff report on that? And then open it up for conversation?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I've, I've made some comments previously. I will turn it over to uh Ms. City Attorney uh to make a short presentation on this item.
Sure. Um, from a legal perspective, um, as mentioned earlier, uh, the city manager. As the acting, as the Director of Emergency Services, has the authority, um, given the declaration of the local emergency. To make orders to protect um health and safety. And uh, so. Uh, on the condition that an, an order that he makes in that capacity must return to council. Uh, for the council's confirmation at the earliest practicable time. So given that um, the order, you know, went into effect on July third. Um, and lasted through that Fourth of July weekend for the temporary beach closure. It's coming back to you now. Um, obviously it's. Um, you know, as, as he's mentioned earlier in the rearview mirror, uh, but this is a requirement of state law. And the MUCO to come back for confirmation and um any discussion.
And so wha- what I was looking for here, and I talked to Catherine about this and uh Bob and um our vice mayor as well. Uh, Robert, um, was figuring out direction that we do want to give as a council. For any type of future events, were such a thing to happen, how we would want to. How we'd want to go about whether or not we do shut the beaches. And if we can give Bob certain direction. If we can give um, our, you know, the council can give a certain, or do we need to have an emergency meeting? Or can we give a direction to a certain point? And then we want an emergency meeting. Or as council, how do we want to move forward with this topic? Knowing that uh cases might go up and we might need to make emergency moves. And we don't always meet. Um, you know, that, that quickly according to what we need to do. And even if we were to hold a twenty-four hour meeting to, to do it. The amount of effort needed from everybody, all hands on deck to get the word out, to get the extra police. To get the uh, the interviews done, the signage, communication with all the different entities. Is so laborious. I'm not sure we can wait twenty-four hours to have a meeting and then go. Personally, from my perspective, I'm one hundred percent okay being dictated to whatever you guys think is the right move. But I wanted to have that discussion here. So we can open that up. Uh, and there might be some public speakers on this topic as well. I'm not sure. But um, that was the, that was the purpose of pulling the item. And, and uh, if, if I, I can start the conversation if you guys want. Or if somebody else wants to start or however you guys want to go about it. Oh, please.
Yeah, yeah, I'll say, yeah. Well, I was pretty comfortable. I thought Bob was pretty clear. And just a little bit earlier, setting up some of those uh trigger points, you know? If, in fact, the governor, if we go through a similar scenario, the governor, for example. Closes just the parking lots for God knows what reasons. Do that again, but if he does, then uh. You know, Bob will have the power to uh, you know, move forward in closing whatever beaches we can. And at the same time, try and influence the state to follow suit with us. Um, and. We don't know, of course, what other source of emergencies may come up. Uh, but I think we would always have a fair amount of notice. Certainly from um the county or state, if things were, were reaching a critical point and we wanted to shut down. Either beaches on our own if we needed to. And I trust that, you know, it's not like an earthquake where we won't have any communication devices, right? I mean, we need to move quick and be really adept. But it's not like that, where we really have to just give up a lot of decision-making power. But I um, I think in this case, in any future case, as in this past case, you know, Bob um. You know, did get in touch with us and mentioned it. And he said, yeah, you know, great. And he should have that power to do so uh in the future. So again, I'm pretty comfortable with the guidelines that Bob felt that he was gonna be following.
Yeah, so you're, and, and that's the thing. If we can just give a couple of direction pieces, obviously if state beach parking lots are closed. I think Bob should be able to shut the be, shut our beaches. That, that goes without saying, but I'm looking for council consensus. Um, and then for me, you know, if Dr. Morrow.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a separate one because that doesn't close state each parking lot. Then we have to go. And how do we kind of like make that aspect happen? Because that's yet a different scenario. And I don't even know what other scenarios might exist where all of a sudden maybe Half Moon Bay on its own has a huge influx of COVID cases. But there's no county shutdown. You know, what do we do then just to protect ourselves? And do we make that move on our own and try to force the whole issue? You know, those are.
Yeah, Adam, can I add to that? Just as an example of what that might look like. If county health officer Scott Morrow decides, hey, we, we really need to move back. It's a phase two or a phase one shutdown. Then we would hear things like, yeah, nobody, you know, you, only essential travel, right? No one could go outside a five-mile limit. All those things that we had originally. Um, if in fact, things get bad enough, we might need to go back to that. But I mean, that would be an example where I could see him uh creating enough of an emergency order and variance. That, that would be our trigger, you know, and we would talk about that.
Yeah, uh, uh, rest of council on those topics, just to try to give direction or, I, I mean, I think that's, I think. Bob, Robert and I are fairly aligned-ish, but I'm curious to hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, I'm, I'm very quick with the way Bob handled. I, I don't think it's possible to understand all of the different permutations that could take place in the future. We have no idea. Um, but I'm confident that Bob will both inform council. And if possible, meet with council prior to making any decision. So I, I'm comfortable with things as they are.
Cool. Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there are sort of accepted triggers for actions. You know, the state has a set of findings. CDC has a set of findings. You know, it's like death rates, rate of positivity and transmissibility, those sorts of things. So we need to track those in the county. We need to track our own statistics on which they have in terms of, you know, cases. Um, I'd actually, I know that SAM is testing its sewage as part of a, a Stanford University research study. To see what's in the um, our effluent in terms of COVID. Uh, they, you know, it's kind of accepted now that there are markers, you know, in your sewage flow. And I know it's coming from Montero and El Granada too, but I would like to know what those numbers are. I, I, I'd like us to. I'd like those numbers to be made public so that we can understand sort of, you know, the scope of its presence. Actually, you know, in the community. And I know there's ways to interpret that. Um, and the researchers will know how to do that. But I, I think we want to know what's in our, what's in our system on, on top of everything else. So.
No question. I'm all in. Uh, Harvey, do you want to weigh in on this one?
No, I basically agree with the Deppers.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right, Bob, is that enough direction for you?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, it is. I think the example that was given that goes beyond the obvious trigger of, of the state. Doing what they did again. Uh, the example you gave of if, if uh our own county health officer came out with some kind of a rollback. Uh, that would do the trick. Um, and then as it was stated, we will make every effort. Uh, to schedule a council meeting, or I will, if that's not possible, then I inform you as I go. Um, and, and, and of course, know that back to the comments I made about uh coordinating with. Uh, with those other agencies. So in the scenario given, if the county and the public health officer feels we should do this. But we don't see the governor taking action. I agree, that's a trigger. But we would then go into motion to try to get all the partners to do it, my initial comment. Worst-case scenario, back to a comment I made earlier about, I don't think it's a good idea to close a city beach if the state beaches don't close. I, I guess like, there is a scenario, if Scott Morrow ordered beaches closed and the state, for whatever reason, didn't. Uh, I, I, I would prob- I would close the beach. Yeah.
I mean, that, that's the thing. That's what I'm trying to clarify because there, there are situations. Now, my one problem with the last situation was, and I don't know just out loud if we can deal with this, but the amount of interviews. Uh, I, I don't know if I can do, you know, I, obviously I have to work a job as well because it's to get paid. So I'm not sure I can take that on. Is there a way to get um, somebody else to do all those interviews again? And, and get all those messages out just in terms of just straight up time and being able to work and.
Absolutely. Your, your communication director and myself would be happy, happy to do those and take that burden off.
Okay, cool. Cause I, I think, I think that's too much burden for a mayor to have to deal with um over and over again.
Absolutely. You can always uh send the media to Jessica and I. Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Good to know. All right, very good. Um. Do we have any public comment on that?
Oh, I have two hands raised. So. You have three minutes. Brent, are you there?
Hello?
Brent, you might be on, oh, there you go. We got you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, yes, uh, I think before we start giving direction to Bob. We, we should take some public comment. Um, you know, I set up those interviews and that may be the mystery here to everybody. Um, regarding what happened on the Fourth of July and how we got the governor involved and all that kind of thing. Um, it just so happens because of my previous work in, in federal and state circles uh in government matters. I was able to throw that together real fast. But uh, it, it's, it's not as hard as I think some people might want to make it sound. And I think we should be very sensitive to the framing here and these, this, this languaging, that sort of nuances. And these this this languaging, that sort of nuances, positions. And we have to be very careful. The Texas chart that I saw, I think we should reject summarily. Unfortunately, we're not going to get the feds to come help us. We're not going, on Fourth of July, we didn't have the state to help us. There was no Scott Morrow, there was no county. And and with the COVID spiking, we really have to plan for that worst case scenario like we saw on the Fourth of July. Luckily, I was there to help. But if I wouldn't have been, that wouldn't have happened. So I want to just be very frank about that. It not to take credit or glory, but to say, because I saw that there was no plan on the Fourth of July. I'm thinking we really need to get our heads together and take the egos out of this. I appreciate if Bob can close the beaches once Morrow says close them. But this game of trying to force the governor's hand didn't work last weekend, and it might not work in the future. The governor is very busy. And he stated clearly that he wants to see leadership from from local people. So we were in good shape this weekend if we wanted to close. And we said we were closing, you can believe Park and Rec or the State Parks would have been right behind you closing, as they should be. With the pressure from the media, that really is, was the key on the Fourth of July. If you remember, once the Mayor of Pacifica announced first with Adam that they were closing the beaches, that really was the straw that broke the camel's back and allowed that to all happen. So yes, we need to get the message out to the media, it's not that difficult. And I don't really believe any of this is difficult if we just start at the end and make sure health and safety of the people before everything. I know it's hard work, I keep hearing that it's hard work and that there's lots to be done, but we can do this. We did it on the Fourth of July and and we can do it to protect our people. We have to be nimble, as we know. But any false arguments or shaping for the benefit of business interests, business interests have to know. However, we have to be closed down for, that's what's best for them, we'll open when it's safe. If we don't do this right, how about they never get open? How does that sound to them? Not so good. So we need to be very careful, the framing here of this meeting has been poor so far. Because we're pretending like this isn't happening to us, and I think it is. Now, maybe there's two sides to this argument, I don't think there is. I think we don't know what we're talking about, and we better be very, very careful here. Because we can infect a lot of people needlessly. I think we are doing it right now, we did it this weekend. It's not what they're going to do at the beach, it's that they're traveling to get here. And and they're bringing the germs in with them, infecting our local service workers, that then that goes back out into the community. And it takes about a 30 day cycle, we think, because we really don't know. If it happened on the spot where people bled out in the middle of the street, I think everybody would be clear on this issue. But it's the time delay that's throwing everybody off. Again, I implore you, please let us reframe this thing and get on top of it for the sake of the of the people of the town. Thank you again.
Next, we have Roy.
Real quick, real quick, I just want to thank Brent for for, I I know he was involved in fourth in efforts to help make all that happen. I just want to publicly thank him, because he did do some some lifting. And so I'm appreciative, I just want to just make sure we get that out in the open. Go ahead, Jessica.
Bryce Salum, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just a brief comment, you know, I'd I'd like to argue for for just a little more awareness of local autonomy. We've seen some states where there's a hard conflict between states and there's the state and the cities within that state about policy, about wearing masks, about what what level of of closure or opening should they should pursue. And I think we're fortunate in California, because the state, the county and the cities are far more in sync than what we've seen back east. But that that may not always be the case so in in future. So I think there's a role here for the local city government to do what it thinks is best in an emergency situation. So I just throw that out and I I I would urge you not to always be precisely in line with the state or with the county when it does not make sense to do so. Thank you.
Roy, thank you. Now, the the one problem with that, real quick, just just so you know, and I'm just gonna go with it, but and maybe we can talk about this offline. Is the agencies involved and Bob, Bob's hit that a bunch of times, but with eight agencies involved. It's a, it's quite a bit of work. And if we just shut down our little portion of beach, mayhem would ensue elsewhere. So I just, I I I hear you and I agree a lot, and let's take this offline and discuss, because I'm curious to to talk this further with you. But difficult as well. I'll just leave it, leave it there. Any other public comment?
No, I have no other hand.
Excellent, any other, any other conversation topics from council or Saul, anybody else need to jump in here?
I can just echo what Bob said, and as a mayor mentioned, it was a very complex and robust plan at the beginning of COVID. And we did involve everyone and we all worked diligently to not only protect the residents, but also the visitors that came to the coast. So I understand everybody's concern in the community, and we are definitely trying our best to deter people from coming when those closures do occur. As Bob mentioned, we had very little notice, if any, from Sacramento, and we went into action that same day. So again, I want to acknowledge all the city department heads for, you know, just being being one team. So that's all I have.
Very good, no, take it. All right, I think that topic is is done. Are we ready to move on?
We'll need a motion.
Oh, I see Debbie Reddick, I'm so sorry, yep, go ahead.
I moved that we confirm order of the Director of Emergency Services, Half Moon Bay City Manager, directing temporary beach and beach parking area closures to prevent the spread of COVID-19 over the Fourth of July holiday weekend.
Debbie Penrose, Deborah Penrose, I'm so sorry.
She seconded.
Very good, so sorry. Very good. Jessica, we do the honors?
Yes, Councilmember Arbat?
Yes.
Councilmember Petros?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, good discussion, thank you, everybody. All right, we are moving on to item two. Which is ordinances and public hearings. Item two A is a consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 8.04 Animal Control, chapter 9.12 Public Nuisances Affecting Public Peace and Safety, and chapter 9.13 Park Regulations.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, community, pleased to be here. And before I start, I just want to thank all the the folks who are involved in this, from the city attorney to the CMO's office, our recreation staff, and helping work through this, so big call out for those folks. Next slide, please. So as just a brief background, our municipal code is at times a challenge. There are sections that have been updated and many sections that have not been updated in some time. And basically, there are two two primary points where there are provisions related to parks. And this revision proposes changes to both of those sections. City staff, as a in a bigger picture, is looking at revising the municipal code in in many ways. Last, in June, you saw a fairly significant revision with the sewer ordinance. Additional sewer revisions are coming and other revisions will come. Basically, we are trying to modernize and update. And following your LCP update, there'll be a significant update of zoning regulations as well. And just a reminder that it staff prepared and the city council adopted minor revisions in 2019. So some may say, why are we back here? That was really a very, very limited scope of work with that. And and in doing some of those revisions, we made a few minor kind of mistakes in 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 not thinking through what we were doing. And I'll talk a little more about that next, thanks. Next. So again, this ordinance revision really drills deals with clarifying and modernizing some of the language and and sections. It incorporates regulations for city breaches, city beaches that have actually never been in the municipal code. And that's kind of was unique and interesting to me, that a beach community didn't have actually beach regulations. It adds and clarifies rules for parks and adds beaches into those. Correct some inadvertent revisions from that 2019 revision. And as Bob indicated earlier, we think addresses a major sustainability issue issue at the beaches and parks, which is single use plastic bottles in particular. Next. So this is all in your staff report, and I I am given the hour, I I did not want to spend a great deal of time running through this, but just kind of walk you through the basics of of what these revisions are. In in title eight, chapter 8.04, which relates to animal control. It follows through and follows up on the on the provision in your action on the resolution for fees to include provisions for dog walker permits. This right now includes for professional dog walkers and also expands that to include provisions for those non-professional, non-commercial, who are choosing to try to walk more than three dogs at a time. And as indicated in the report, we're we're going to still kind of evaluate that latter piece. And also, this provides some clarifying language with regard to allowing the council to establish off lease, off leash areas without going back and modifying the ordinance to identify those specific locations. There are no specific, you know, plans for that, but it would provide that opportunity. And under no circumstances would this happen without council authorization and approval. Title nine, chapter nine, 12, basically deals with enforcement kind of related issues. And the main issues there is to move actually and remove glass container prohibition that exists there and move it actually into the parks and beach section. And then also to modify the infraction section to remove the actual stated cost of an infraction and to refer that to the city council adopted user fee schedule, which may adjust from time to time. And so that keeps that fresh. Next. I'd say the real meat of the matter comes in this section, which is chapter nine, title nine, chapter 9.13. Notably, this actually adds park and beach regulations to the title. And then follows through with a series of revisions that are proposed there. We realized that one of the things we did when we, when we did 2019, we included the beaches or the beaches as city parks and inadvertently placed a limit on the hours per day that they could actually operate, which is inconsistent with the coastal act. So we had to fix that. And in doing so, we had to also adjust the parks and beaches to reflect now that we have beaches and we have parks in the section. So those are really the, those may were really minor revisions. It includes kind of an updated list on the prohibitive prohibited and unlawful activities. And I won't go through all of those unless you are asking for it. Notably, as noted again, ban single use plastic bottles, one liter and smaller in parks and beaches. This, the next section, we have a prohibition against fires. Our suggestion and recommendation at this point was to at least include language which would allow for the council to come back at a later time and perhaps adopt a provision for city controlled fire pits at any of your beaches. Again, nothing in the works, nothing planned, we talked about this last year. We've with COVID, we just have never been able to move forward and even thinking about it. But this would preclude having to come back again and do an ordinance revision to enact a program that 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 we think might make some sense, particularly given the illegal fires that we constantly are hearing about at the beach. And then also, one of the provisions that the 2019 revision did was it actually when we included the beaches in the parks, it included the prohibition of alcohol in the beaches along with parks. So it was basically a prescriptive, we didn't allow alcohol in the parks, therefore beaches were a park. And then we questionably, question, I guess, is whether we inadvertently included them or 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 did that? We think that it was an inadvertent action and and as such, this would, this adjustment would put back the the allowance for alcohol consumption on the beach. Next item, please. So that leads me to sort of the what what I would consider the significant policy issues as part of this package. Obviously, kind of number one is, are we okay with permitting alcohol consumption back on the beaches? Now, again, historically, because we didn't have regulations and we didn't have any specific ordinance provision, it was allowed by right to to consume and have alcohol on the beach. We know it's happening, and frankly, if we prohibit it, we know that it will continue to happen and it becomes an issue of enforcement. But this still may be a policy issue that you want to discuss. I would note that the state beaches don't allow alcohol consumption on them. So that whether that's, you know, and, you know, an important piece to the puzzle, I don't know, but that is factual. We believe that banning the single use plastic bottles is consistent with your sustainability strategic initiative and follows along with a lot of your conversations regarding how does San Francisco ban plastic bottles at the airport? Basically, because they own the airport and control the 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 uses and the activities there. And this falls right in the line with that idea. And that would apply to both beaches and parks if adopted. And ultimately, the fires on beaches, I I realize, is one that usually generates some interest among our community members. And and that just may not be an acceptable option to leave that in and move forward with this, the idea of leaving the option for for a program. Next. With that, the the recommendation is pretty simple, obviously, this is a first reading. You can direct minor revisions and still introduce the ordinance, and I'll leave that to Catherine to help guide you if there are anything of significance in the revisions that might require us to come back and and introduce it at a later meeting. So with that, I'll leave it and take any questions you might have.
I just want to quickly, John, I just want to thank you, I know you took a lead on this. And you really did a lot of work on trying to figure out all the applicable statutes and the history and putting it forth to us in a way that we can all understand what the issues are. So thanks a lot, appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm I'm like, I'm, anyone, anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say that I am thrilled about the single use plastic. That's that's one of my babies, and I can't believe we're doing it, and I'm just tickled to death.
I'd like to second what Deborah Penrose just said. And has there been any issues with drunkenness on the beach and any problems with alcohol?
I'll maybe leave that to 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 Saul, I mean, I, you know, I I would say this. The problems that I see are the end effect, which is the endless supply of cans, bottles and the case, the the remnants of cases of beer. And our friends, our friends at Abundant Grace get to clean that up as well as my staff. And that's the after effect. You know, certainly, we have reports at times of inebriation and and public drunkenness. On the other side of it, I I think regardless of where you are, you have that. And I want to believe that the majority of people And I want to believe that the majority of people, you know, are are reasonable about it. And they just enjoy having that. And I know one of the questions and issues comes up is I'd like to go to the to the beach and just open up a bottle of wine with with someone, you know, special and watch the sunset. And and that's a pretty big tradition, I think, around the community. And I think most beachy communities have that tradition. And so that that would, you know, in essence, preclude that or make that an unlawful activity at least.
Thank you.
I'll just add to answer Councilmember Rorbrack's question. So, you know, this does give us some type of leniency or a balanced approach on enforcement. You know, we can definitely identify juveniles or underage drinking a lot easier. You know, with our Polaris deployments, we have been able to disrupt several parties in the last month during this pandemic. So that's been helpful. We have not received our new Polaris, which is still at a courtyard getting equipped. And that's been a slow process, but we have been able to borrow one from OES. So with that said, we have not seen an increase in drunken public arrests per se. Are people under the influence? Sure. I mean, after, you know, one alcoholic drink, you can be under the influence depending on your body weight and size. So is it a larger issue as a whole? No, it's not. I think we're still focused on the bonfires and the large parties that people have complained about since last summer. And we've been pretty effective going down there now that we have access to the beach and we have kind of a response plan to that. So.
Saul, can I ask you a follow-up on that? Because I just wanted to be clear. So if the state beaches don't allow alcohol, but only the city beach does, are you saying that it's easier for you in terms of us of us also not allowing, no, sorry, of us also permitting alcohol? Because it gives you more flexibility or or is it better to have that rule of law if you do want to stop a behavior? How do I mean, you know, how does that?
Well, as law enforcement, I'm not going to recommend alcohol consumption or allowance of alcohol. That's up to obviously the council decision. But I will say that in distinguishing the beaches, it's pretty easy for us to identify everything south of Kelly. So that is where we focus and that is where most of the complaints come from. South of Kelly being Poplar Beach all the way down to Seymour Ditch. And, you know, my entire staff already is aware of those areas. And again, during the daytime, we rarely, if any, times receive complaints regarding the consumption of alcohol or
During the daytime, yeah, right.
Yeah, daytime. I mean, it's always a nighttime activities that bring the attention, especially with people walking the coastal trail or people that are aware of that activity that want to prevent it. So.
So, got it. And so we will have a public hearing on this because I certainly would love to hear from the people in Poplar neighborhood. And maybe there's, you know, a refinement of no drinking after a certain hour, you know, I don't know. But I'm looking forward to getting just more public input on this from the communities that might be most affected.
Councilwoman Penrose?
Yeah. About bonfires on the beach and fire pits. If we do allow them, as you say, we have in the past, we'll still be requiring permits for the use of those fire pits.
We have not allowed, as far as I'm aware of, there's, there has been a prohibition on fires in the, in the, on the beaches as well as in the parks themselves. Our suggestion was to at least do the ordinance revision that would allow the council or future councils to decide whether they want to try to run a pilot program or whatever and and put the fire rings out and to basically let people sign up for those and and pay for those and deal with that in in certain defined locations. And this is not an uncommon thing down the coast. And I mean, it's, I've been to parties with my son and 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 his friends and stuff at Carmel Beach, for example, for birthday party, and we had a fire. They've now switched over to actually propane fire rings there that the city brings down and sets up and and you deal with this. So there's any number of ways to approach this. If if it's, you know, we can always put this off another day and and not put it in the ordinance. And we'd come back and when we have a program, we can revise the ordinance at that point and make it right. We were just trying to bypass or or make a little shorter process. If it made sense, the community was in and all for it, then then we could just come back to council and adopt a program and try it without doing the second, first and second reading in thirty days and all the things that go with an ordinance update.
Yeah, I think the general thought process there was if people had to sign up for them, they would clean them up because there would be a name on the fire pit associated with it. So you can track any mess back to that person. So I mean, from my perspective, I wasn't, it's not a money-making venture. It's, it's, I don't even want to charge for it. I just want people to have to, I want to know who's there and make sure they clean up after themselves. End of story in my.
For for staff, we've lost so much fencing along Poplar Beach there that that we we land on the fact we could buy a cord of wood and save ourselves thousands of dollars just by providing it up there so they didn't tear off the fence and just burn the wood that we provide to them. But, you know, I'm not doing that, but, you know, in a, in a cost perspective. But that was kind of the idea that that let's, let's maybe down the road, you know, figure out a way to do this and and people would sign up, they would associate with it, there'd be time limits on it. And it would be a managed controlled process and deal with it. It it may not go anywhere.
Exactly. Might work, might not work. The, yeah. Done. Anyways, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I want, I wanted to really say that, yeah, for me, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of stuff in here. Dog walkers should appreciate what's on here with the dog leash laws, possibly looking into all that piece. Single-use plastics is near and dear to my heart as well. That one I've been pushing for a long time as well. And so I'm very happy to see that. I know San Francisco's done it as well and other places are looking into it. I think Los Angeles are another place. So very excited to start that movement and keep moving in that direction. And a lot of good stuff in here that I think will help us over time. None of this stuff is definitive, is my understanding. And all these things will be discussed amongst council before anything were initiated. And like the fire rings, for instance, no matter what, even if we put them in during the summer, we have to remove them during the winter because the water comes up so far, it's going to wash them out otherwise. So it's kind of like you have to kind of put them in and then take them out, I would assume.
It's seasonal.
Yeah.
It would be seasonal, you know, summertime, peak season time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Just, just throw.
Most likely.
Any other comments on this? Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't have any raised hands, Mayor.
Okay. Man, I can't wait to get back in person. It is doing this stuff virtually. Um, okay.
Make a motion.
Exactly. Please. Yeah.
I move that we conduct, I'd like to move that we conduct a public hearing and introduce on first reading an ordinance amending chapter eight point zero four, animal control, chapter nine point twelve, public nuisances affecting public peace and safety, and chapter nine point thirteen, park regulations of behalf of Moon Bay Municipal Code to include beaches in chapter nine point thirteen.
Second.
Beautiful. Jessica, I'm so sorry. Do we need to open a public hearing at some point?
I was just going to clarify that as part of the motion, we opened the public hearing. There were no public speakers and so we closed it. And so with that, I will take the roll call though. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. All right. So now we're moving on to item two B and the ordinance and public hearing sections, which is fiscal year 2020, 21 sewer service charges and assessments. We've talked about this many times, I believe. And let's go to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I I pointed to my background, which is a shout out to Matthew and Victor for their work on the park signage that was put in in 2019. So that was my, that was my call out to them. And thank you for the work they did on that one. And we're just, we're just building on that. So thank you. Thank you for your, your support and introduction on that last item. Tonight, yes, the sort of the last step in the 2020 sewer fee issues, which is to set sewer assessments for this fiscal year. So a lot of this you know by heart by now, and I'll, I'll sort of skip through it quickly. But we operate our own sewer system. Our treatment is provided through the Joint Powers Authority at SAM Sewer Authority Midcoast Side. We have to fund that. We fund that through the, through user fees, user charges. And on June second, the council adopted new charges and rate structure. You adopted an ordinance to reflect that new structure as well. And the sewer charges apply to a total of 3,465 customers within the city. And just a reminder that that we do not, we do not include the areas north of Frenchman's Creek itself. Those are within the Granada Community Services District Sewer Service Area. So these are 3,465 customers located south of Frenchman's Creek. But it also includes some customers that are outside of city limits, including the Moon Ridge Development as well. So anyway, next. So I think something that most that you know now and have been going through this for several years, we use the San Mateo County Property Tax Rule to collect most of our annual sewer charges. And as such, we are required by law to to set, to set this up and to provide the assessors parcels and the assessments to the county controller. And and there's a deadline in in early August for doing that. And that's why we're here tonight is we need to, to, to forward that forward and deal with this. Again, we have 172 customers that we bill directly for, for various reasons, including those that are outside of city limits. We can't assess on their property tax rule for properties that are located outside the city limits. So it just, that's the way that works. And some of our commercial customers that are a little more unique. We also do direct billing. Again, by early August, we're required to let the county know that we are going to have this number of parcels, 3,293. We'll, we'll have special assessments and include for December and April installments of the property tax. So the, 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 the cost will be shared and split over two installments of the property tax, one beginning December 2020 and the other in April 2021. The revenues coming out of that is, is $4,238,861. And if you looked at the attachment A to the resolution, you'll see those numbers reflected in that as well. And as noted in the staff report, this is very close to and flat to the cost, to the revenues we generated last year. And when our consultant, Tommy and from MFS spoke, we talked about the issue that we would not see a substantial change in the actual revenue for 2021. And this reflects exactly what our consultant said would happen. And then we will see the adjustments occurring in the subsequent years to come in the next four years. So this, they, they came out as, as noticed. We are required to notice this public hearing. We did notice that actually twice is required by law. And tonight, we're required to hold a public hearing and that is what we're asking you to do, which is to open the public hearing, conduct that hearing, close the hearing and consider moving the resolution forward to allow us to set the assessments for 2021. Next. So again, this is the basic recommendation and I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. We've been through this a bunch of times. Are there really, are there any questions or comments or public? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody on from the public that wants to talk about this?
We have no public comments.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And let's move on to council. Anything to discuss?
I move that we conduct a public hearing, which we have just done, and adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 sewer assessments and direct staff to file the assessment role and authorize the county controller to place the assessment charges on the county of San Mateo Property Tax Roll and direct staff to bill assessments directly that are not on the tax roll. Second.
Beautiful. Thank you both. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Rorbrack?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Beautiful. All right, well done. Do we need to take a break or can we continue just checking in with council? Continue, it looks like.
Everyone else okay?
Yeah. Okay, I can continue. Okay, so let's move on to three on the agenda, which is, which is resolutions and staff reports. So let's start off with item three A, which is a resolution setting a measure on the November third, 2020 general election ballot, seeking voter approval of a proposed ordinance increasing the city's transient occupancy hotel tax on rent charged to hotel guests from 12% to 15%.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'll go ahead and kick this off. We have a three-part presentation tonight. I'll go ahead and do the introduction. Then Deputy City Manager Matthew Chittister will take the middle section. And then we'll finish with our city clerk, communication director, Jessica Blair. City Attorney Engbert is also here to answer any questions, legal questions that might come up. We assume there might be some. This, this item certainly is a long time in coming. The idea was certainly something that was thought about right after I was hired in conversations I had with council members and others. It then also came up more formally at the council's priority setting workshop in April of 2019. And then more formally, when the council approved the 2019, 2020 budget, it was, it was discussed and came up. And we were directed as staff to explore ways to enhance revenue. So in the discussion of the budget, we're always talking about expenditures and revenues and providing services and priorities of the council and the community. And within that conversation, the council recognized that revenue generation was important. Times were good, but there was a high demand for services. And so that stat, the direction with staff should look at various options for how we would do that. Transparency occupancy tax, the, the item that's before you tonight. And we are as staff recommending that council adopt, adopt an ordinance that does just that, what the mayor said. And that is to put a measure on the November ballot to increase transparency occupancy tax from 12% to 15%. On this slide, just a short description of what transparency occupancy tax is or TOT or hotel tax. This is a tax that's on hotels, motels, bed and breakfast establishments, inns, RV parks and short-term rentals, kind of a newer phenomenon that probably started 10 to 15 years ago, as well as, I want to say, private campgrounds. Just in case the question comes up, state parks does not pay TOT to the city on the state park campground. This is allowed by state law and it's codified in a city ordinance. And the city has the right to establish the rate of this tax and it's currently at 12%. And the city has the right to establish the rate of this tax, and it's currently at twelve percent. And that's in the current city's ordinance. Um, this is a pass-through tax. It's actually assessed, assessed on the visitors. And the hotels are passing that revenue on to the city. Uh, interesting note at the end, the fourth bullet point there, ninety-five percent approximately of our revenue generation is from hotels. Um, as, as I mentioned, it does apply to a few other um. Uh, overnight accommodations that are listed here, and the one that's most prominent uh, in the last ten years is short-term rentals. And we are uh, generating more and more revenue from that source. T O T does apply to short-term rentals. And as your council knows, uh, about a year ago. Um, a, 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 a contract was established with one of the larger platforms, Airbnb. Uh, for short-term rentals, uh, to make the payment of that T O T easier. It comes straight from Airbnb as opposed to the hosts. Uh, who use the Airbnb um, platform. And I just want to mention here that when the council gave us the direction, the direction was broad on revenue enhancement. Um, but I just want to make the comment that as compared to the other two revenue sources that the city relies on, property tax and sales tax. This one has the advantage in that we do have control over how much the rate is. Property tax, uh, we essentially have no control over base property tax. Uh, parcel taxes are allowed. Um, but there's more restrictions on those. Sales tax, also the base sales tax amount is something that's not within our control. All those cities do have the ability. Uh, to do add-ons up to a certain point uh, and raise sales tax. Um, but T O T certainly offers us the most flexibility. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so here's a snapshot of the city budget and how our T O T revenue fits into our budget. So the five-year average revenue uh, for the city going from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen to nineteen is about fifteen point six million. And you can see the five-year average of T O T is five point nine million during that same five-year span, or about forty percent. Of our, our main revenue sources. So it, it is substantial. And this is upside down compared to most cities in the state of California. Uh, it is very rare that T O T is the number one revenue source uh, for cities. Typically, it's going to be property tax, um, in many cities, bedroom c- uh, cities for sure. And then in other cities, I guess, cities that are more on the other side of the spectrum, opposite of bedroom communities. Uh, sales tax is number one in many instances, uh, where there's heavy commercial, um, but not as much residential. Um, so as I mentioned, June two thousand and nineteen, city council directed uh, staff to explore revenue enhancements. Uh, later that year, we did hire uh, the firm Lou Edwards and Associates. They're a public relations and local tax measure consulting firm. They're well-known in the state of California. They're based in Berkeley. Um, they have quite the resume for other local jurisdictions that they have assisted with tax measures. And so we felt that it was a prudent move uh, to bring on their expertise. Uh, to assist us with uh, weighing the options and bringing this before you. So they've been on retainer since and provide, have provided staff invaluable information. And help and assistance on how to navigate this and bring this to your council today. Um, for your uh, direction on that. We also formed an internal team. You're hearing from three of us today. Myself, Matthew Chittister, Jessica Blair. Also on that team. Uh, was Lisa Lopez, your Administrative Services Director. Um, Karen uh, in the City Manager's Office, Karen Decker. Uh, Catherine, of course, on the legal side, and Colleen has also assisted um, Jessica on. On various issues, and we've been meeting regularly uh, over the course of the last year. So as we weighed the options, uh, we did look at all three sources. Uh, early on in January of this year, or I would say probably even November, December of last year. Uh, we asked the question to Lou Edwards, you know, what was their thought about viability and the options? And so the other two options would be a parcel tax and increasing sales tax by, say, a quarter cent or a half cent. And so they then took that charge and helped us evaluate those options. And uh, we did do polling on both sales tax and T O T in December. And received very favorable results on both. But eventually decided that uh, T O T was the better option. And one that we would want to recommend to the council today as opposed to sales tax. And, and the essential reason for that gets back to the point that I made earlier. Uh, in terms of our reliance on T O T. It's both a good and a bad. Uh, it's a very volatile source of revenue, and that has never been made more clear to us than in this pandemic. Um, it has always been stated that it's a volatile source. And so that, and so as a city who relies on T O T, we should be conservative. We should have bigger reserves than other cities, and, and, and your council has done that. Uh, it is recognized in previous budgets, the volatility of. Uh, 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 an uncertainty of T O T and the reliance on such a major source. Uh, that, that the city has made decisions to have uh, good, solid reserves and so forth. Um, but on the other side of it is. What is the right option for us in looking at revenue enhancements? And T O T is the city's bread and butter. Uh, it, it, we are a tourist town. There are something like fourteen hotels within the city of Half Moon Bay. And because it's, represents forty percent of our total revenue. Um, and the impacts to the city. Uh, and many of which we have discussed tonight are caused by the very uh, visitors and tourists that we rely on. Uh, that is part of being a tourist town. Uh, it's our bread and butter, and we're able to do what we do because of tourism. Um, but on the other side of it, uh, it's an opportunity to make sure that taxes are. Fairly and equitably uh, distributed to the people who should pay them. And so in this respect, as we weighed the options, this made the most sense to us. As something to bring forward, increasing T O T from twelve percent um, to fifteen percent. Um, just as an example, the opposite, I guess, would be maybe a city like uh, Emeryville, for example, in the East Bay. Uh, Emeryville is sandwiched in between Oakland and Berkeley. And um, their sales tax is clearly the driver in their city. They are the opposite of a bedroom community. And they predominantly probably look at sales tax increases as the way to enhance their revenues. And I know they have done uh, a couple of measures in the last five years, and their sales tax is substantially higher than the city of Half Moon Bay. So it's just an example of what, of what we looked at internally and what Catherine Lou assisted us with. In terms of bringing the best package and what we thought would be the most successful way to enhance the revenues and the most appropriate way to do it for the city of Half Moon Bay. Next slide. So we wanted to show a few photos of the services that we provide, uh, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. And fortunately, one of the uh, photos on this slide, you've already seen this one tonight. It's a Maya's. Uh, artwork uh, that will grace the cover of our budget. Um, and there's the look of it, um, with the title of the budget that will be forthcoming soon. Uh, but these other photos, we wanted to show just kind of the variety of services we provide. Obviously, we're showing. Uh, public work staff that hard at work. Uh, we're showing our contract with abundant grace and the work they do to keep the beaches clean. Uh, we're showing. Um, uh, our, our. Uh, activity guide that comes out from our Parks and Rec Department quarterly, and then also a, a shot of planners at work. Next slide, please. Here are just some more photos, um, that kind of demonstrate uh. City services and what's important. And so again, you see uh, in the middle, a, a very important project that was recently completed. Vertical access down to the beach, of course, our library. Look how beautiful, clean it looks, clean, green and safe. Uh, in the top left-hand corner, i- is the youth um, summit that's put on by Sally each year. Sheriff Activity League, uh, Concerts in the Park, et cetera. Uh, one of the reasons uh, we're showing this is, is to show the importance of the services we provide. It does go back to the polling that we had done in December. And a more recent poll that we decided to have uh, post-pandemic. Uh, the pandemic was a significant enough of an event, obviously. That we really questioned at first whether this was the right timing to bring, bring this measure forward back in, say, March, March seventeenth, March twentieth. Uh, we were in such turmoil. Uh, as time went on, uh, we decided, no, it is the right time to do this. And now more than ever, uh, the city needs to focus on revenue enhancement. So that the city can provide these services to the community that the community is, is demanding in spades right now. So what came out of the, this local, this recent poll? Um, that these pictures are showing to some degree in terms of the services. And facilities and infrastructure that we provide. Um, four very important points came out of the most recent poll. And the first three are, one. What, and these were questions that were asked to the people that were polled, what's important to you? What's important? And you, many questions were asked, but it was asked, what's really important to you with regard to this potential tax? And number one is local control. Second is that it's paid by visitors, not locals. And third, nine-one-one response, and in gen- and more generally, emergency response. And the reason those three came up so significantly was they were tested in December. And then they were tested again just recently, a few weeks ago. And what was significant about those questions was how much they moved. From December to a couple of weeks ago. They all three moved by double digits. And so that was just really impressive in terms of. Um, what has changed for people in terms of what's important and what's they, they value pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic. Next slide, please. So I just want to come back to the numbers, um, the five-year average of our revenue at five point six percent. Uh, T O T during that same timeframe, as I mentioned, forty percent of our revenue. And then what's important here is the effect of the pandemic. So in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, uh, we hit our high watermark for revenue from T O T at six point eight million. Um, the expected T O T, and we were expecting six point eight million plus again. Um, if, if nothing else had happened, and we, if we had kept, kept going with the current economy. Uh, we closed the books and had to downgrade our expectation back when the pandemic hit in March. And our expectation was only five million to close the year. As I said, we'll have a financial update in August and see how, see how we did. And then for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, we're actually only budgeting two point three million. So obviously, there's been significant reduction in staffing, projects and services. And that gets back to my point about as we went from the initial. Um, analysis of revenue enhancement and what would be right for the city. And then the pandemic hit, and we started to wonder. Uh, we came to this point where, as I said, now more than ever, as we start to come out of this and recover. Uh, is the right time to propose this? So with that, I'll turn it over to Matthew. I think I went a little too far in some of mine, but Matthew, I'll kick it over to you to go into the details a little bit more.
Thank you, Bob. Um, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the outreach that we've done and the research that we've done, and then the feedback we've received. Um, there's a couple of different ways we provided outreach on um. This particular concept of uh, one, just enhancing city revenues. And two, on specifically a T O T increase. We had surveys that were tied to our listening sessions as part of our budget process this year. Uh, called Join the Conversation, and it was a chance for people to chime in and just provide some of their top priorities. For the, the city's focus and spending, and um, we. Had that open pre-pandemic, and then um, we've also had it open during the current pandemic. And it's interesting, as Bob mentioned, to see how some of the opinions shifted. Uh, pre-pandemic, you know, we had a strong economy, things were going really well. And so people were focused on things like uh, traffic and how do we mitigate the impacts of traffic? Mostly from tourism, but uh, that was uh, on people's minds, preserving and protecting our open spaces. Making sure the city uh, had strong financial viability and nine-one-one and emergency response times. Post-COVID, um, some of those focuses really shifted, and now folks are looking at how do we. Um, economically uh, as a community, and especially for our businesses, recover from the impacts of COVID. How do we keep our public spaces safe, healthy and clean? And uh, emergency preparedness, preparing for other disasters remains really high on people's. Priority lists, and we've had uh, several hundred responses to those um, ongoing surveys. As Bob mentioned, we did some polling, some scientific surveys, one in December of two thousand and nineteen. And again, in July, late June, early July of this year. Um, and these were statistically significant numbers to help us understand the voters and, and what our, our voting. Uh, groups would be thinking. Uh, and, and the crux of it for the T O T, and, and part of the reason that T O T was selected as, as a great option is. Um, in December, seventy-four percent supported a T O T increase, and in July, that increased to seventy-six percent. And, and that gets to the, the fact that it's uh, visitors paying for the impacts that they create as they um, come and patronize our community. Um, we also held several community presentations and discussions over the last couple of months. Um, we presented to the Chamber of Commerce uh, in a couple of different settings, the Downtown Association. Uh, the Hotel B I D, uh, KEEP, which is an emergency uh, preparedness group. Uh, the Rec Commission, the Recreation Commission, the Rotary Club, Coastside Collaborative, the CERT Groups and the School District. Um, and, and received mixed feedback from folks, uh, a lot of support for this, a lot of support for um. New ways to support our businesses and our community as we move forward. Um, I, I will comment, and, and you'll probably hear more tonight, and I know council members have heard from some of our business groups, uh, concerns about raising T O T. And some of the concerns about the impacts that might have on tourism. And uh, and I, and I think it's important to be thinking about that in the, in the context of this, but we do believe that. With the, the kind of voter support that we have and, and what we see in other communities, that this is the right move going forward. Uh, so as discussed, we've uh, we're making a recommendation of fifteen percent. Uh, we're currently at twelve percent, so this would be a three percent increase. That three percent increase, we believe, uh, under normal conditions, and we know that it may take a couple of years to get back to normal conditions. Uh, but in a normal economy, that will generate approximately one point five million dollars in additional general fund revenues for the city. Um, for the purposes we've talked about. Um, you know, people have asked, why, why not go up to thirteen or fourteen or fifteen? Uh, our thought, one is um, you know, the significance of a percentage increase or two percent. On a hotel bill is not significant, but obviously, looking at the numbers here, each percentage is about a half a million dollars a year. Uh, that can be used and reinvested in the community. And it's not something you come back for on a regular basis. So we felt like um, the fifteen percent was appropriate. It does put us on the high end here in the state. There are Palo Alto's at fifteen and a half percent. There's a few other cities at fifteen percent. Um, but we believe again that um, people want to visit Half Moon Bay. There's demand for um. The, the tourism that takes place here, the hotels that we have, the natural resources we have. And, and we believe that people will continue to visit us um, as we come out of the pandemic and going forward. A couple of, again, key factors that were important to the community, and I think make this an important way to um, generate additional revenues. We have complete control over these funds. None of these funds go to uh, the state or any other agencies, which means we can invest them right back into our community. Um, it's paid by our overnight visitors, not by our residents. And uh, our funds can be used for any city services, um, most prominently, making sure that our nine-one-one and emergency response and preparedness are. Are taken care of. I- we can also maintain our facilities, uh, and again, keeping our public spaces clean, healthy and safe. Um, we know we have priorities around affordable housing, economic development, and of course, recovery as we come out of this. Um, COVID pandemic and recreation programs and programs for youth are all important to the community. And as Bob noted, polling data shows that uh, the, the locally controlled funds. Um, the payment by visitors and our ability to continue to fund our emergency response and emergency preparedness and other city services. Um, were really important to the community and only became more important to the community as uh, the pandemic moved forward. So the other um, item that was not originally polled in December, because it, it really wasn't uh, an issue that had come up much, but. Was polled in July and, and is. but was polled in July and, and is really shot to the top of people's priorities. Is, you know, the city having the resources to keep our public facilities and public spaces clean, healthy and safe. And that ranges from, you know, our, our down, our, our parks and our plazas to our streets and our sidewalks. And then of course, our open spaces and beaches. And making sure that those resources that we have that make this a great community, not just to visit, but to live in, remain healthy and safe and clean for, for everybody, both residents and visitors alike. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Jessica, who will talk about the ballot question and how we move forward from here at the pleasure of the council. Jessica.
Thank you, Matthew. So this slide covers the ballot question as is included in the resolution before you tonight. The language shown here is a product of months of work. A lot of time went into the drafting of the ballot question and in whole, it is guided by the results of our polling work and represents the services deemed most important by our residents through our Join the Conversation survey, survey efforts, as well as the two polls that were conducted by the research firm that Matthew and Bob spoke about. After the most recent poll, an additional priority, keeping public areas safe, healthy and clean became apparent. And we modified the language shown here to reflect that. It is exactly seventy-five words, which is the word limit for ballot questions. And next slide, please. If adopted, the resolution placing the measure on the ballot does a few things. First, it requests that the county add this measure to the consolidated election and print all necessary materials on the ballot and in the sample ballot per election services agreement. It states that the full text of the ordinance, which is included as an, as an exhibit to the resolution, be printed in the sample ballot. And it also sets the deadlines and parameters for measure arguments. Primary arguments will be due by August fourteenth and rebuttal arguments, as well as the city attorneys and partial analysis will be due by August twenty-fourth. My office has prepared a guide to filing measure arguments, which will be available on the city's elections webpage this week if the council moves forward with placement of the measure. And next slide, please. And so that concludes our report. The recommendation tonight is listed here. And please note that placement of this measure requires a two-thirds vote of the council. We're available and happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you guys for a great thorough report. I'm going to open up, so I'm just going to start off with public comment. Is there, are there any public comments on this topic?
I have one hand raised so far from Kristelin. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me this time. The Chamber of Commerce has also done some research and talked to our hotels. And the hotels are not in favor of such a large increase in such a short amount of time. So this hearkens back to when we were discussing minimum wage increases. It's, it's timing, that's the real issue. If we were having this conversation pre-COVID, it'd be very different. If we were having this two years from now on the next ballot, it'd be very different. And a lot of our hotels have been severely decimated by the pandemic. And they've had to push a bunch of their travel contracts to 2021. So when raising the TOT to fifteen percent by the end of this year, which is what the ballot would do, they have to then go back and renegotiate all of those contracts, which they are very concerned that they will then lose. So there will be a negative revenue impact to them in the short term. And as it was stated before, under normal circumstances, it might raise 1.5 million, but it's probably years until we reach back to normal. So it, it would be wonderful if this could be. The chamber is working on, or sorry, the next ballot. And the chamber is working on putting together the tourism study that we will be talking with you about later this year. And I think this is a perfect time to really gather data about what the visitors would do and what they can handle. Fifteen percent puts us really high. And this is not really the time to lead that trend. The city's mentioned multiple times that it wants to support the small businesses in their recovery. And this, to vote, to put this on the ballot is a vote against our small businesses, which has already been noted, the hotels are ninety-five percent of the TOT generation, which is then forty percent of the budget. So I would like to implore you to please discuss other options, whether that's tiering the TOT rise so that it's not fifteen percent out of the gate. Palo Alto is continually brought up at fifteen point five, but it should be noted that they were at fourteen percent for four years prior to going up to fifteen point five percent. So we just need time to get to fifteen percent. And we think we could get there and we think it could be a really great collaborative effort. And we also think that there's ways out there where we could figure out how to get revenue from the day trippers. The day trippers are the ones that cause the most issues with the trash on the beach and the congestion and all of those things. And this ballot measure would put the burden on the overnight one, overnight guests, who are actually the ones that we want here. They are the ideal tourists. And so I please ask you to consider waiting until the 2022 ballot or tiering the increase so that our hotels can handle this and actually recover from COVID. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristelin. Next, we have Dana Dahl. Dana, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for taking the time to at least entertain and, and listen to my comments. Directly, I'm a numbers person, so when you talk about fifteen percent increase, I start looking at the numbers. And I've been watching Palo Alto for the last couple of years. Know that the health of the hotels here in Half Moon Bay directly, directly affect the financial stability of Half Moon Bay. And so when looking at Palo Alto's numbers, yes, Kristelin's right. They did not go from something as low as twelve Palo Alto to fifteen. They gradually did it. They did that in 2014. They raised their TOT to fourteen. And I know you guys are looking at Palo Alto's numbers as kind of example of success. But I wrote a letter to all of the council members about my concerns about how it negatively affected Palo Alto raising to fifteen percent. And I appreciate Adam, like, asking me poignant questions about that and, and having me validate the facts of the percentages that I put in the letter to you. I shared with him two reports, what we call the STAR reports, which are an industry standard gauge on how the hotels in any community are doing as well as ourselves, so that we could judge our success. And so for Palo Alto, just to go back to my letter that I wrote you. When Palo Alto initiated this TOT increase to fifteen point five, which again, is the highest in the state. And the hotels were, of course, opposed because they had just had a TOT increase just four years prior. And, you know, the hotel years, I have some peers that ran hotels in the area at that time. And their biggest issue with the TOT increase was being the highest in the state. But also that the city of Palo Alto was not tapping into their vacation rental by owners or the Airbnb potential. They were stating that they were getting eight hundred thousand from those Airbnbs. When in reality, when they look, when the hotel council of Palo Alto looked at Airbnb, Airbnb's website, they were leaving three point seven million dollars on the table. Because when they looked at Airbnb DNA, they saw that there was potential of four point five million that the city of Palo Alto should have collected when they only collected eight hundred thousand. So the hotel council was saying, that is where you should be collecting your funds. So as the TOT came into effect, they, it was voted in 2018. It came into effect in April of 2019. It's interesting, the report that I show, the very first month that the TOT was in effect, their revenues went down fourteen point four percent, the RevPAR. That is significant. And by the end of the year, they were down by point four percent. When in comparison, San Mateo County, San Francisco area, rose seven point four. That is over eleven percent differential. So if they did not raise their TOT, they may have made more money than they did in increasing it. And that was during a strong economic time. We are not in that situation. We are absolutely not in that situation. We're in a pandemic where the hotels are trying to recover. And like Palo Alto, who probably lost a lot of business to the neighboring cities like Menlo Park that had a much lower eleven percent TOT, we are in that same predicament. Our competitive markets, Carmel, Monterey, they are all at lower, lower TOTS. And the, the most, the strongest argument I could say is San Mateo County is at ten. That's the Oceano, that's the Seal Cove Inn. That's a lot of competitive hotels for both the BnBs and the hotels. Not to mention, we are getting revenue from our vacation rental by owners or our Airbnbs. Think of the Airbnbs that will also lose business to El Granada Market, Moss Beach Market, that's not in Half Moon Bay. I think we are jeopardizing the revenue in which we can try to obtain the next year, two years, as we recover to competitive markets. And I think, you know, hopefully, city council members, you will look at this very closely. Because I really feel like it's a dangerous move at this time. And it will sacrifice some of the revenues in the next couple of years if you be as aggressive as fifteen point five percent, I mean fifteen percent. You know, I, I appreciate Adam that you took the time to really respond to my letter and ask poignant questions. And keep in mind, this is what we do for a living. I know you've done polls to residents and, and things like that, but this is what we do for a living. We watch these markets very closely. And I think it's a grave mistake to raise to fifteen percent. I don't know of any city that has raised three percent TOT, especially when their competitive markets are at ten and eleven percent. I think you're, again, sacrificing revenue.
Dana, thank you for your comments. Thanks for all the back and forth. It's been a pleasure talking to you, getting to know you and all the work you do at the Beach House. Very appreciative, so thank you for those comments. All right, any other public comment?
Yeah, we have three more.
Okay.
Virginia Turison, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. You guys are doing a great job. I mean, I know there's, there's a tremendous amount of extra work that's been imposed on all of you. And it's remarkable how you're up to the challenge. You know, my first inclination always with these taxes is I prefer it to be a hotel tax rather than a sales tax, simply because it doesn't affect the citizens of Half Moon Bay, you know, on a daily basis in terms of their spending. And I wish there could be some allocation, you know, exclusively to the Ritz Carlton, because I think they're the one hotel in Half Moon Bay that would be, would likely not really feel the brunt of it in terms of their visitors. But listening to Kristelin and Dana, their comments are very, very persuasive in terms of the significant jump and the timing. The way COVID is looking right now, I, I hope you're not forecasting much of an increase in, in residence in any of the hotels for the next budget year. So it's likely this wouldn't, you know, come into effect until 2022. And so I, I think, listening to these comments, Kristelin's comment about tiering it, perhaps, you know, one percent a year, starting in 2022, might be the most palatable. And, and then you see how it goes. But, you know, I, I know we're all looking for, you know, revenue sources. And it's a, you know, a natural inclination for people to, you know, be willing to tax something that doesn't affect them. But the impact in terms of, in particular, you know, those that are pushing out their stay by a year. Right now, I think you'd have to go back to them and let them know there's changes in, in the cost structure. And that might be problematic. It's, it's, I think it's going to take a couple of years, as Kristelin mentioned and Dana mentioned, for there to be any real recovery in the hotel side. If this, you know, continues at the pace it's continuing. I mean, it's getting worse instead of better. Thanks.
Thanks, Virginia.
Thanks, Virginia.
Next, we have Joel Costa.
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. How are you this evening?
Hey, good evening.
So representing the largest contributor of that forty percent, we definitely recognize the comments of our colleagues. And when you think about individual travelers, I think Virginia's comments, it's possibly true that the type of guests that are paying the rates of our hotel for leisure travel may or may not look at that increase. But what I'm here to tell you tonight is just to consider the fact that actually sixty-five percent of our rooms revenue comes from group business at our property. And group business is all but decimated this year. And the amount of business that we are looking at putting on the books next year could possibly be a fifty percent reduction in the amount of group rooms we normally do. We need to be extremely competitive as we move forward into the next couple of years, booking new business. And our competitors do not lie within the region of the coast within fifteen, twenty miles. The largest competitors that our hotel faces is down in Southern California, Santa Barbara, Orange County, where their taxes are going to be considerably less compared to a fifteen percent. So although individual travelers paying large rates for leisure at a property like ours may or may not look at that, that little line item on their bill, or when they see it, when they check out, they're not so happy. But a group planner and a decision maker is looking at every tax, every fee that is added on to room rates in their consideration of where they're going to take their business. And that type of a hike, especially in the short term during this type of situation, is going to cause us a severe uncompetitive advantage. So we wanted you to take that into consideration as you move forward. We appreciate all the comments that our colleagues have made as well. And thank you very much.
Yeah, and just, just for reference, Joel's Director of Sales and Marketing for the Ritz Carlton Half Moon Bay. And thank you for those comments.
Welcome.
And next, we have Keith Westman.
Good evening and thank you. Um, yeah, uh, you know, I, the main thing I want to emphasize is just how very aligned are the fortunes of the hotels in Half Moon Bay and of the city itself. Without fail, over the course of the history of having a TOT and having a hotel industry in Half Moon Bay, the best times for us have been the best times for the city. Those have been concurrent always, and there's probably never going to be an exception to that. You know, and, and, and we know this is not about us paying less in tax receipts or collecting less in tax receipts to, to forward to the city. We're, we're happy to be part of, a big part of, of what makes Half Moon Bay what it is and allows the city to be able to function. But we also have a longstanding understanding that we don't go to the bank and pay our employees and feed our families with percentages. We do it with dollars. And there's a very real risk here that you, you boost that percentage by a huge amount and you actually decrease the dollars that were That we're collecting from guests to forward to the city. Um, I have no doubt about the polling that shows the ballot measure would pass. I would have no doubt that this ballot measure would pass for a T O T increase if you made it thirty or forty percent. Because there is no easier pitch to make than, hey, we're going to collect this tax. That you don't have to pay, that your neighbors don't have to pay, that your property owners don't have to pay, et cetera, et cetera. There's never an easier pitch. That doesn't make it a good idea. Um, because ultimately, it can be pro- counterproductive when you get to a diminishing returns with higher percentages. Lower um, numbers uh, actually collected. I think uh. Joel's point was, was uh, was very um, important regarding. Uh, the, the fact that over the last decade or so, what the, the Hotel B I D and the Chamber of Commerce have really. Made a great effort to do is enhance. Um, the, the group, the group rooms, the weekday business. Um, that has a, a much smaller impact on quality of life. Uh, you know, you, you, uh, the, the. Our, our visitors kind of blend into the scenery, uh, Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday at least. And that's what we're trying to build. That's who we want to collect more from. That's who we want to get more. Um, uh, more occupancy from. And, and happy to collect those taxes at whatever rate it is, but the number of it can't go down. If the tax receipts go down, um, it doesn't matter that you're getting a higher percentage from them. Um, and, and that is again, that's the pitch. We're conflating, as Crystal and pointed out, we often conflate. That awful traffic that we see on ninety-two and on one on the weekend with our overnight visitors. Guess what? That's not our overnight visitors and that's not what we're trying to, to uh, to enhance and trying to increase. Um, and again, back to that, why is it such an easy pitch? It, it's because we think we can, we can take those visitors paying that twelve or fourteen or fifteen or thirty percent for granted. And guess what? You can't. There is tax competition. And we are going to lose out to those other cities and other municipalities and, and counties with lower tax percentages. And uh, and, and we're going to feel it worse than if we keep it the same. So. Again, I, I, I know that we can't keep taxes from ever going up. But as Dana suggested, a phased-in plan, a more gradual one. With the opportunity potentially to scale it back if we see, if we see, you know, over the course of a year. That taking it up to thirteen percent had a deleterious effect. That we have time to react and, and dial it back down, uh, getting back to the governor's idea. Uh, let's go with a dimmer switch approach, not an on-off switch. Um, if we have to take it up to thirteen and it's working. And we say, all right, we can take a risk here and make it fourteen the following year. Fantastic. We're happy to do that. We're happy to do that. But when it has a deleterious effect on our occupancy, on our rates, on our ability to compete for uh. For a finite amount of travelers in a tough time. Uh, we are making a mistake by increasing the percentage. Uh, to the extent that it can decrease the overall tax receipts that we're collecting from our guests and paying into the city. Thank you.
Cool, thanks Keith. Uh, any other comments? Jessica?
No, there are no further.
Alright, cool. Let's bring it back to council uh, and discuss. Who would like to start? Go ahead Debbie.
I, I think the tiering argument is compelling. I, I think hearing from Dana and Mr. Costa and the others um. Around the numbers has been informative for me. Um. I think it's something we need to consider and, and discuss. I'd like to hear from our mayor who's got a lot of expertise in the industry.
Yeah, uh, you, you guys want me to go first? Alright, here we go. Um, obviously, uh, so first of all, great comments from the community. Thank you all for talking. Dana Dahl Beach House, Kevin Kelly Ritz Carlton, uh, Kelly Chamberlain B I D uh, District. Uh, as a hotel executive myself, I know that clients are becoming more cost-conscious. I mean, we just have to say it. Uh, it, it's true. They currently have options. You know, prior to COVID, there wasn't as many options out there. There was still options. But a lot of them got booked up quickly and there is demand. So there are multiple options out there for each hotel. For each group at this point. I'm talking group. When, 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 when most of the, and it was good that Joel pointed it's out, but. When most people think of increasing the T O T, we're just thinking of, you know, somebody coming in off the street. And uh, spending the night at the hotel for two nights. And, you know, I likened it, in, in Palo Alto, people talked about it. Oh, it's like the, the, you know, the cost of a, of a cup of coffee. And for us, it would be the cost of like a dinner uh, one night, um, or something like that would be the increase. And it's not that. And it's very clearly not that. When you're talking about a big convention, you're spending a million dollars and you're going from a twelve percent on top of the million. To fifteen percent on top of the million. That, that actually makes a difference. So I get all that. Um, and uh, when we're talking about big groups, Crystal in at the Chamber also. Uh, great advocate and brought up many good points about future groups and cancellations, negotiations. All those are going on right now. Everybody's canceled and negotiations for, for, for future is problematic with it. T O T increase on top of it, uh, with all the options out there. That does make things a little dicey. Um, she brought up, brought up great points about hotel travelers versus beach travelers. And what the difference is in terms about the trash contribution and the funds to the city. The people coming to the beaches, you know, it's funny, everybody says, well, let's figure out a way to tax the people just coming to the beaches. I've never once heard somebody say, here is an idea on how to do that. Cause I, I agree. How do we do it? How do we get, and we talked about that for hours earlier, you know? The parking, the this, the that. How do we collect money from those people that generally do the most damage? Everybody says, well, we're willing to do it. We're willing. There's no, there's no ideas out there. And so until we can figure that piece out, um, that's a big piece of what we have to do moving forward. This is yet another option. And just to be clear, we went after the, of the short-term rentals as soon as I got into office. And that was one of the big moves that I wanted to do right away was figure out how to get after short-term rentals and the revenue associated with them. And I think our city's done a damn good job, uh, getting the short-term rentals under control. The opposite of, uh, of, of Palo Alto, we did that first. And started making sure we were getting that revenue and started collecting all those pieces. Uh, so we did our due diligence from that perspective. Um, and just because there is voter support, I want to be very clear. Just because there's voter support does not mean it's a good move. Like I, I can, I, I get that aspect as well. I do agree, uh, Keith, I believe, I haven't met you. Um, but I agree with, I think Keith was his name and, you know, this will pass. If we put it on at whatever rate, it's going to pass because it's an easy sell. Uh, and that part makes sense to me. Now, on the flip side, um, you know, this money, we need, we need money. We, we just straight up need money for the town. Nobody's providing us another avenue to get it. Uh, we had to cut staff. We, we're on ten percent furlough. Uh, none of the city council members get paid anything, you know, and so it's kind of like. What are we going to do? We have to, we have to have funds to make the city run and to support tourism. Now, I'm going to give you some statistics as well. When we talk about Palo Alto. So Palo Alto increased their rate from twelve percent to fourteen percent in two thousand fourteen. When it's raised its transit occupancy tax. So again, it went up two percent. In four years. The hotel taxes roughly doubled from twelve point three million in two thousand fourteen. To a projected twenty-four point five million in two thousand eighteen. So was there a negative correlation with that increase? Quite the opposite. There was a positive doubling correlation. So, you know, people bring up all these correlations. I keep asking people for specific numbers and facts to support their beliefs. Nobody really provides me with any actual facts. Most people just come up with their own ideas and solutions. Dana is the only person that actually came up with and back to me with true facts that I could analyze. And I know those reports inside and out, so I'm able to analyze them. And there's some truth to what she's saying. In two thousand eighteen, when, when Palo Alto went to fifteen point eight percent. Uh, there, there's a, you know, there wasn't enough time to really analyze what's been done with that. There's not enough time to really get correlation, but the numbers that she suggested earlier are one hundred percent correct for the record. So uh, whether that's direct correlation, whether that's COVID, whether that's all the different aspects, there's so many things being brought into that. It's, it's impossible for me personally to give definitive answers there on what's going on. So, I mean, I'll just say that the facts are all over the place. The uh, opinions are all over the place. We don't have other revenue sources to go to. We are shaking the trees as best we can to go after all revenue sources. In every way possible. Um, and this is one of the ways that we can do what we need to do. We have dropped all our infrastructure funding. It is all not funded any longer. We have no infrastructure projects. Um, to speak of, they were all defunded. We had to do that as part of our budget. Uh, we need, we have Carter Park, that's no longer going to happen because of the city's financial woes. We have Matutra Plaza, which we wanted to revitalize. That can't happen any longer. These are funds that could be used to revitalize the community in a way that is tourist-serving. So that's all benefit to bring more people to Half Moon Bay. I mean, we just put in the popular staircase, another benefit. That costs money. It was, you know, a hundred thousand dollar project. We need ways to make Half Moon Bay more of a visitor destination. Earlier in the conversation, earlier tonight, we talked about, okay, we want to install um. Parking uh, uh, meters throughout the, to, to signify what parking areas exist. And, you know, there, there's money associated with that. I can't remember for the seventy-five thousand, we've been doing this since five day, five P M, so I'm starting to lose my mind. But um, you know, so there's different sides of the argument from both sides. We absolutely need to take the T O T up. At what percent? I am one hundred percent willing to discuss as a council and go from there. But we need to do, we need, we, we're going to need to start the process. Of uh, of going through it from my perspective and at least getting it on the ballot. But I want to go back to what Keith said. Once it's on the ballot, whatever we decide tonight. Unless we're going to discuss it again, is probably what's going to pass. So we need to be careful with what we decide is our, is our finding, is what we want to go with. And I am also, okay, based on this current environment with a tiered system. Um, I would be fine with that. That my, my, my thing is, no, no matter when. You want to raise the T O T tax, the, there is obviously opposition to it. So um, you know, literally every place I researched had opposition. Every time. Not once was there a T O T increase and there wasn't opposition. So hotels are always going to come out and fight this. That's what their jobs are. So um, you know, we have to take all that into, into effect on all different sides. Whether fifteen percent during this time period is too much, uh, that's highly debatable. And I agree with, I don't, I might have even been Keith, or I've heard different comments that we might actually lose money going up that high. If we push that price point too far, we might lose money in the process as people go elsewhere. Uh, I don't necessarily a hundred percent believe that will happen, but uh. You know, and figures from Palo Alto don't suggest it, but those are all in good markets. We're not in a good market right now. So that, that's kind of stuff to digest. And then we can come to whatever you guys want to come to from council, but that, that's kind of give some background information. And I'll open it up now so other people can discuss and I can tell you what I think afterwards.
Um, we need money. That much is absolutely clear. Whether or not raising the T O T is gonna result in more money or less money. It's not absolutely clear to me, but my intuition, and I'm not a hotel person. But my intuition is it will raise money. Maybe it won't raise uh, proportionally as much. But it will raise money. And we don't want to go through this exercise of uh, putting stuff on the ballot more than once. Uh, so unbalanced, I think it still makes sense to go ahead with uh, uh, increase to fifteen percent T O T. And that's what I'll support.
Alright, let, let's continue to go around the room just so we can have a little bit of dialogue and then we can discuss it and maybe piece it together. Uh, Deborah?
Yeah, I am, um, I, I think I was feeling convinced. Until I heard the hotel people talk. About the, not the individual. Individual visitor, but the group visits. Um, I even don't know what percentage. Of their occupancy is ruled by group visits. You know, how, how much of Beach House's revenue is obtained from groups? How much of the Ritz is obtained from groups? That may be a large part of their income. But what percentage of their reservations are made up of that? I think that would be interesting to know. Um, my inclination at this point is to think in terms of a. Maybe a two percent. Increase this year and then raise it by another percent each year. So, so two percent at first and then in a year, three percent.
So just, just to be clear, it'd be two percent and then a year, one more percent to a total. Okay, yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah, that would be my inclination not to, a- and I think that, that two percent. Increase, we may not even know. The full effect of that for the next two years.
That's right. Well, it also doesn't go, it wouldn't go into effect, you know, as people were talking. Real quick, Bob, when would this go into effect?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, and members of council, uh, the election is, I believe, November fourth.
Yep.
And Jessica can get the exact dates right, but if effectively, it would be around the first of the year.
Okay, so.
Uh, the council has, does have discretion to delay the start of the effectiveness of the task.
Yeah.
So tiering is an option as, as you're starting to discuss. And delaying the start date is also an option, but Jessica, under normal circumstances. Is it exactly January first or it's right around January first of twenty twenty-one?
No, so it's actually ten days after the city council certifies the results of the election. And our reorganization meeting is scheduled for December fifteenth, so it would go into effect on Christmas.
Yeah, almost January first, okay. So we're, we're looking at the start of next year. So I mean, it's still, still five, seven months away in terms of negotiations and different pieces. Um, of course, everything's already negotiated for future years, so I guess that doesn't really help. But just throwing some, some information out there. Um, Debbie, Deborah, anything else before I move on to Robert?
Yeah, um, I, I also wanted to say that. I don't like the idea of being so far out of line with comparable communities. And, and I don't mind being a little higher. But I think fourteen percent sounds more reasonable to me. I, I don't compare us to Palo Alto at all. Uh, we're a beach community. We're not Palo Alto. Um, on the other hand, we're not Santa Cruz. We're, we're a, a much more attractive option than Santa Cruz. Far as I'm concerned.
We love Santa Cruz though.
Right, but what, what is Carmel is not that high.
No, Carmel's not that high. I think it's at eleven percent.
Yeah. So I, I don't mind being higher, but I don't want to be so out of range that it is obvious. That the price difference is going to be huge for, for groups. Um, and I, I also think that if we do raise it by two percent. with the idea that we will raise it to three percent twelve months after that, that we can always stop if we look, if it looks like in two years that we're losing revenue because of it, then we could keep it at two percent because I think other cities, the county is certainly looking at raising it.
Yes.
And other cities are looking at raising it as well. So I I think I think a more gradual approach.
Yeah, and and just to be clear, Crystal and it asked me, you know, she said if we're gonna raise ours, it'd be important that the county raise theirs as well. And I did reach out to Don Horsley and with myself and Bob. And I can't remember if Robert was on that call or not, but we we talked to him. And they are also now considering to make sure that we're all in lockstep going along with that. So we're not in with with big differences. So.
Are they talking about the same amount, about fifteen percent?
No, no, they were, they were looking, I mean, I don't know what they'll end up at, but they were talking about fourteen. Robert?
You know, I'm inclined to agree with Harvey on this one. My thought is, frankly, I don't think the difference between fourteen and fifteen percent is gonna make this huge difference. And when it comes to the group rates, and again, you know what, Adam, I I kind of defer to you on, you know, the economics of hotel stuff, but you know, I always feel it's like, you know, how does that sausage, you don't want to know how the sausage gets made. You know, I call a hotel, get a particular rate, depends on the time of day, sometimes I could negotiate this, that, depends on the occupancy. Did I get a rate online? You know, group rates are different and they're negotiated. Everyone's gonna be negotiating rates at all the hotels, I presume, because of covid. And people will be making deals and trying to get business from each other. So at the end of the day, I don't, I just don't really get how that difference of one or two percent is gonna make a big difference in the group rate because the hotel can always adjust the rate. But again, I don't know the business that well, but that's how it would seem to me. I think we're in an amazing location. I'm a company and I want to have a conference, our our distance to Silicon Valley up to the city is, you know, incomparable and it's a beautiful place. So, yeah, I I would probably just go for the fifteen and if we make a little less, you know, what was it, predict one and a half million, you know, if if we lower the rate, we'll make less anyway. So if we make a little less because we have the rate a little higher, how will, how will, how will anyone ever really figure out if the, by a causal effect, if business was lost because of that, you know, one percent? And right now, that's what I'm hearing from Deborah, fourteen percent, then another one percent after a year. And I just not quite sure I get that huge difference, but, you know, I'll probably, you know, if there's a huge energy one way or the other, I'll probably go along with it, but right now I'd probably just go for the fifteen.
Yeah, no, and 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 I guess the thing is, from a hotel, your perspective, because I hear where you're coming from, it is, you know, in the ideal, you want to keep your, your rates high and you don't want to have to come down on your rate to then give the tax away, of course. I mean, so, right, like, makes perfect sense. So the hotels are going, I'm, I don't want to have to lose money because you guys want more money in the city and your tax goes up. So if they could keep their rate the same and the fifteen, you know, but then then it's going to the person paying. And if they split the difference, then both of them are paying an extra, let's just say, one point five percent. Does that make?
No, no, it does. And look, again, we could, there's so many other factors that we don't know. If the economy comes back a bit and things get healthy, a lot of people for a while might not be traveling far or still want to be closer, you know, not want to take planes. And there's so many factors that we don't know. So you know, with that in mind, I think, you know, using our, you know, using the experts that we contracted with and our advisors, I think, you know, they gave us their advice and their predictions. I respect that also.
And and I just want to be clear, we are going to lose money on T O T regardless, for years, for years to come. Like, this isn't, no matter what, like, next year, we're gonna lose money on T O T. As as Virginia said, or somebody else said, I hope you didn't budget much for it. We didn't. We budgeted extremely little for it. And we're gonna probably continue to do that for possibly a couple of years to come. I we don't know what to expect. We but we know that we budgeted very little for this upcoming year that that started, just as Bob noted, as, you know, at last month. So we're in the new fiscal year as of now, but just recently, and we budgeted very little. So no matter what, we're, if we increase it, the entirety of our take home obviously is going down one hundred percent regardless.
That's right.
So there's gonna be no ability to really track right now because we're just not in those times that we were before. So, you know, I I I'm more, I'm more with Deborah and possibly Debbie on this. And I actually think the, personally, the right plan of action is to, I don't think we can go to fifteen percent. I think we can go to fourteen percent. I think we should delay it maybe six months into next year. Enough time for the hotels to be able to do what they need to do, to recoup and also to rebook everything and to make the adjustments necessary. And that would also take us to the new fiscal year. And that, then we could, then we could program it in based on everything going on. And we'd have a good sense of being able to track it a little bit better to have better sense. But it also should give the business community enough time to react. And then I kind of like Deborah's where we proposed the fourteen, six-month delay and then possibly six months after, go, if we, if we need to go to the fifteen, go to the fifteen. But it is going to be a tough climate out there to sell group business. And, you know, with people taking all the concessions into effect, I know, you know, some of these hotels even have resort fees associated with them. So it's like, this is why, what's happened is there's so many fees tacked on that nobody looks at the average daily rate anymore when it's like, you know, three hundred dollars a night. They're like, well, what's associated with it? Well, there's a resort fee of twenty-five dollars a night. There's an internet fee, there's a get my towel fee, there's a do you want to actually talk to somebody fee? You know, there's a do you want a key to your room fee? I'm joking, but there's a lot of fees associated with the with it.
So I just to make, can I just make, I just want to make sure I understand what you're proposing, Adam. Because it would be nice just to have one ordinance.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so fourteen, let's say, one, two points, and then we built in, we build in the extra one percent six months later, with the whole cha-cha not starting till June.
That's right.
Right, and that way, because we can then always say we can pass that ordinance, we will still, if we do it that way, we still have the option of assessing then and then putting off that extra one percent or for some reason.
I I, oh, I I think that should be built into it somehow then because we might not be able to do it. I mean, that might be a good point. We can come back, maybe, and maybe we just go to the fourteen and do it six months into the next year. And then we have to go through the whole damn exercise again, which would, which would be, which would stink because of the amount of resources associated with going through the exercise.
Yeah, if we want to pay that expense too of doing that.
Exactly, the expense on top of.
Okay.
Yeah, Debbie, please.
I I can support fourteen percent with a six-month delay, but I I think we ought to give it at least a year if we're gonna raise it another one percent.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
You know, give it another year to see, you know, how things are playing out, at least another year.
So would you, would you support then building that into the measure, the one year? Or do you want to then go through the whole process again?
Oh, no, I think we should build it into the measure.
I I I'm in on that. I can support everything you just said.
We can always.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, I'll I'll wait till the transmember Penrose speaks.
I was just saying, if in a year, we are at fourteen percent and we're about to get fifteen and things are just much, much worse and the hotel industry is almost dead, we can always write another ordinance saying that we don't want to go to fifteen percent. How do we, how do we do that, Catherine?
Is that, Catherine, I I love the conversation topic. Is that possible? Obviously, it should be, I would assume, but can you weigh in?
To do an ordinance that would decrease the tax from the.
So what we're saying is, if we, if we currently go with Debbie, what Debbie just said, so we go to fourteen percent, six months into two thousand twenty-one, and then a year from then, we go to fifteen percent. And then what we're asking is, let's pretend we get to twenty twenty-one, the six-month time period, and we do that whole year. And then we realize, you know what, we can't do the extra one percent, even though we already voted on it and it was approved. Can we take it away at that point? Like, can we vote to take it away?
Yeah, without reaching to this to the ground, I believe you can because the voter approval requirement kicks in to any increase, any new or increased tax must be approved by the voters. You know, by fifty percent plus one, so it's basically not putting that into effect. Believe we can, we can go ahead and do that.
That would be easy for council to enact.
Yeah, but if you want to give yourselves the discretion to go up to fifteen percent, then we do need to include that fifteen percent in the ballot measure.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I think I would be in favor of building it in and then being able to, so we're done with all this part of it, the expenses, as we talked about. But then being straight up that we will have a meeting again, hopefully will involve the entire hotel council before that date and and kind of talk about, here's where we are. And maybe we'll see if Keith keeps his word and all the various people and they're like, hey, here we go. Please take it up that extra percent. We're having no trouble. Or if they, or you know, all the various pieces that exist at that point.
I think it's also a good idea probably not to be somehow commercially known for having the highest tax in the area.
Yeah, fourteen percent is the same as Oakland, it's the same as San Francisco. So it's not gonna take us like out of the stratosphere. Fifteen percent does make it somewhat like, for some reason, that extra percent, from my standpoint, takes us a little bit out of the stratosphere. So I'm I'm happy to to stay here.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so, you know, fifteen percent, if you're gonna go high like that, I think you need amenities to support it, right? You need to have the sort of tourist amenities that are worth the fifteen percent. So if we go to fourteen percent, you know, invest in our beaches, in our access, keeping things clean and screw stuff, then I think you have a better argument for fifteen percent. You know, I mean, Palo Alto is fifteen and a half because it has, because it's Silicon Valley. And there's a lot of group and business traffic, right? And there's University Avenue.
University.
So fourteen, I think, is doable, you know, fifteen, I think we we want to take that money and invest in our community, invest in, well, amenities.
Yeah, I agree. I also saw, and and I'll talk about this further, but there's a lot of places that do assessment fees based, you know, like the town of Mammoth. They take money beyond the T O T and they give it to like an entity to hold all their like film festival, their wine festival, their jazz festival, their this, their that. All the, all the, the weekly events that happen in that community to drive tourism in. And so that keeps that going on from that standpoint. So I mean, to me, that's a a model, I mean, Half Moon Bay, you know, not that we necessarily need that many more summer visitors per se in some respects, but paying visitors would be ideal to come into the streets and and participate in what's going on. We actually have a surprisingly, we don't have comparatively to other tourist towns, we do very little in terms of festivals and get-togethers and events like that. And I would love to see that change. But that's yet a further conversation. I will approach it a different time. But just, I agree with what you're, I don't know if that falls into the category of what you're talking about amenity-wise, but I I I'm in agreement, at least if that does.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like the council is getting possibly to some consensus before, so before you get all the way there, let me just make a couple clarifying points on on the two changes that you're considering. So just to distinguish the difference between the two and what they accomplish and 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 the ease of implementing the two. So the first one of delaying the start. So from what I heard and what I think I hear the council reacting to there is comments made by Crystal and and also Kevin Kelly made them to me on a phone call that they have locked in group rates. And so the delay allows some flexibility in terms of when this starts. It doesn't start right away and they have to renegotiate contracts. So that is responsive to that concern that you heard from a couple different people in terms of they've already got contracts at the lower rate. And that's easier for us to do. So in terms of the action, the changes that Catherine has to make, it's small changes to the ordinance, but no changes have to be made to the ballot question. So that's important to note the difference. So that can be done, the start can be delayed without changing those seventy-five words that Jessica showed you earlier. So that's a positive. So it it's responsive to what you heard and you don't have to change the ballot language. If you were to go to a tiering system as suggested, fourteen percent for the first year and then it could go up another percent a year later, that actually would affect the ballot question language that you saw. So it's not, it's not something that can't be done, many cities have done it that way. But it has to be very clearly specified in the ballot language and you only get seventy-five words. So so we tested the ballot language essentially that was shown and that's what it polled. And in no way am I saying that revised ballot language wouldn't still pass, as some people have noticed. People feel pretty confident about how how this would fare in November. But the ballot language would have to be changed, so it would be really clear, fourteen percent on such and such a date, and then a year later, another percent would kick in. I'll have Catherine clarify that a little further, but I just want, is if, before you get to that final decision, I wanted to make make it clear that that that's a difference and makes it a little more complicated for us to do the tiering than it does simply delaying the start. And Catherine, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, I'll just add, just to clarify that a little bit more. The elections code is very clear about what needs to go into a ballot question for a tax measure. And one of the, one of the things is it's got to show, it's got to provide the the rate and the duration of the tax to be levied. So if we're, you know, gonna be at fourteen percent for, you know, the first year and then subsequently another percent, cities have done that quite commonly, but but that structure, it does always, as far as I've seen, you know, shown in the ballot question itself, so the voters clearly understand what they're voting on. So if we want to go there, I would, I would actually want to have a short break just to make sure we're, you know, counting the words properly.
A a short break as in tonight or what do you?
Well, if we want to do it tonight, we could do that.
No, I don't need to, I don't need to, I'm not suggesting that we, I'm, I was thinking, but does it have to be done tonight?
No, so you have obviously until August seventh to, you know, put this on the ballot, you have another council meeting on August fourth, I think it is. If you want to.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Give us direction to go back, we can, you know, perfect the language.
Is that August fourth meeting going to happen?
No, or at least it's not scheduled to.
Okay, if it's not gonna happen and it has to be on the ballot by August seventh, I'll let you do the math.
Yeah, no, that's good. So let's, let's, you know, we, I don't know if it's possible, we have another item to discuss. Can we move into that and then come back to this item?
I suppose that would be, you know, that would be an option. Give us a little bit of of time to sort of continue this till later on in the evening.
Yeah.
And you could, then, if you had enough time to figure out the language, if you didn't, then we could have a special meeting on August the fourth.
Yeah.
For just this item.
Yeah, I think that works. Any any concerns?
We gotta make sure that the entire council is there. We're gonna need four votes.
That, yeah, I want to make, I want to make sure that there's consensus first. I just, I just wanted to make that point that we would have to change the ballot language, it would have to say very clearly. So we'd be adding words and then we would have to subtract some other words. And and then then it does start to make the ballot question a little more confusing when you put it on there. But if that's the consensus, then Catherine and Jessica could work on that, why John is is doing the next item. is doing the next item.
No, and if it's John, I mean, we've got time.
Is everyone wedded to fourteen plus one, you know, two plus one? Are people happy enough with fourteen percent and we just do that and let it go? Um, just wanted to be sure of that, I mean.
Yeah.
Well. We want the flexibility, we don't want to have to do this over again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to check that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm in agreement, I wish I weren't, um, but just based on the amount of logistics necessary, but the the cost associated with going through this exercise uh and the time and energy, uh, we we from, in terms of being, yeah, I'm sure everybody gets it, but for for our fiscal responsibility alone, I think we have to put it in just so uh we we don't have to go through it again. It sounds like it's super easy to get rid of it once it's voted on, but uh going through this process again, uh, no. Okay.
Mayor Eisen, if I could, um, could we have a motion to continue this item to after two three B?
Moved.
Second.
Perfect. All right. Can we move on to the next item then?
All of it.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, aye.
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 Thank you.
The roll call zoom vote, I like it. Um, I'm getting a little punchy, eleven seventeen, here we go, all right, uh, item three D. Here we go.
Mayor, council members, I'm, um, because I I can't be brief, I'm going to pass it along to Maz and insist TV brief.
No, we need to take our time now, we gotta have, we gotta get seventy-five footage now.
Oh, no, oh, no.
You can do it, we've got all the time.
It was always the plan anyway.
Every other slide, every other slide, that'll do.
Here we go.
Are you awake, Maz?
Sure, I'm, yeah, oh, yeah, we've got, I got two kids that are still awake, so.
Oh, excellent.
Um, thank you.
Take it away.
Thank you, thanks, John, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public, uh, tonight, I'm just gonna do a quick up uh report out on the Highway One Safety and Operation Improvements, uh, South Project. We have a we have a long recommendation, apologies for this, I'll, I'll go through the elements, um, but uh the big, the couple of highlights is we're going to be uh amending uh our grant fund, grant funding agreement with Seminole County Transportation Authority, accepting an additional four hundred and forty thousand towards the construction of this project. Um, we're looking at a transfer uh of forty-nine thousand six hundred and one dollars from the capital budget to Highway One Sa- South Project. Um, and then award construction contract as well as the supporting consultant contracts uh to get this project um to construction. Yeah, a little bit of background, um, the, uh, this project started back in two thousand twelve with a uh SMCTA awarded grant of about three and a half million dollars for design environmental um review and construction of the necessary safety improvements at the intersection of Highway One, Main Street and Higgins Canyon Road to the southern side of the downtown area. In twenty eighteen, a major milestone was achieved with the planning commission approval of the CDP and CECL. Um, the next major milestone in October of last year was the Caltrans approval of the project plan and specifications. Um, and the subsequent uh uh encumbrance of the three point two million dollars towards construction of that SMCTA grant. The proposed improvements of the intersection include a downtown entry signage, um, signalization of Highway One Higgins Canyon Road intersection, elimination of a uh essentially free right, uh, right turn um off ramp northbound Highway One to Main Street. Uh, number of pedestrian and bicycle safety and accessibility improvements, as well as stormwater management improvements. Um, the overall uh project budget, um, I I we have spelled out here is uh if we we come in just above four million dollars at four million thirty-nine thousand six hundred and one, and this includes the construction contract with Redwick Construction, the lowest responsible bidder, uh, five percent contingency, construction contingency of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and um construction uh support services, construction management support, design support, and material testing. That all comes to our total. At the table below, um, I I have, have is the original three point two million measure eight grants for the construction. The new amendment that is going to be um, that we're requesting amendment tonight of additional four hundred and forty thousand um, uh, from the SMCTA. A city contribution of uh as part of our current C I P allocation and our, and our local match in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the request of an additional forty-nine thousand six hundred and one dollars from our uh current capital uh budget. Um, I just wanted to share a little, a quick rendering uh of the project, this is, um, these are the uh downtown gateway um, signage that I mentioned earlier, um, it's a, it's a major feature and aesthetic uh feature to the project. Um, and with the uh additional funding that we're requesting tonight, we'll be able to do, complete this entire project. Um, and we're looking at breaking ground hopefully in the next um six to eight weeks. So again, with our recommendation, um, it's a long one, I won't read it all off, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just, if I could.
Please.
Um, just, uh, one, given the length of those recommendations, I think it's, it's perfectly fine to, if there's a motion to in support of this, to just support staff recommendation and rather than go through the litany of of all of these, so uh from that point, I I also would just like to thank the staff, um, our consultants, and for particularly the SMCTA for coming to the table and offering the small funding um to to allow us to get to this point. Um, as you uh recognize, as part of this, we are asking for your support to fund the base bid plus the alternate bid pieces, which are the walls and some related earthwork and 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 landscaping associated with that. Um, we are um recommending support of that um of of both of those in part because um we think it's the right thing to do from an economic development perspective and and aesthetic, uh, but it's also, we think, from a financial perspective. If we um wait and bid the alternate uh at a separate time, we think that that cost could could run anywhere from double to triple, um, the cost that we were bid out with the overall bid, so we think this is also about um a cost saving matter as well. And again, um, the SMCTA grant, they is a somewhat of a floating grant. If we reduce the amount of our project, the SMCTA grant funds reduced as well, the additional four hundred and forty thousand reduces to roughly, I think, three hundred and sixty thousand or so. So it's a, it's a game uh we're playing, um, another question to come up is, do we have enough contingency? I think it was a very legitimate question, a pertinent question to this. We typically would, would usually ask for ten percent, we felt the project was um so well designed, so well, um, you know, evaluated, um, was going to be managed closely, inspected closely, all of those things involved a lot of material that were on a set cost, um, that we felt that this was, um, the five percent was sufficient for this project, not necessarily for everyone, but for this project. And um we will hold our consultants um feet to the fire and our contractor to make sure it comes in at or below the contingency amount for sure. Thank you.
All right, any, any clarifying questions from, thanks, John, and Maz, any clarifying questions from from council?
Um, Maz, you showed a rendering and looked like uh there was some overhead, you see in the background there? The, I thought everything was going to be undergrounded.
Those are, um, those are the, the end, end of the undergrounding uh limits, what, what is being, what is being removed is the section that comes from those poles um across Highway One, but.
That's extending down Higgins Canyon still.
Correct.
That goes to all those properties down there.
That still feeds, yeah, a number of uh properties and and businesses.
So just to be clear, just to be clear, the undergrounding's happening, just to be clear, uh, uh, under Highway One.
Uh, under Highway One and across uh Higgins, uh, across Higgins Canyon Road and Main Street, there's a line that goes from the two poles currently uh across. And so that line is being removed as well as this line that goes across the Highway One.
Okay, yeah, that'd be nice if it was more, but yeah.
And remember, uh, yeah, just on that issue, um, there is a requirement on anybody building on that adjoining property that they will, um, one, uh, provide a fair, a fair share payment back to us for the investment in the over, in the undergrounding. And our intention is to um, is to get the undergrounding along Main Street um northerly um with any project that occurs um on that adjoining property. So we'll start to see some of that happening if 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 something happens on that other adjoining property.
Yeah, no, I think every line we 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 ground is is a, is a step in the right direction. I just, I just, I I have a quick co- uh question before we go to public, and then we can see if, and then come back to council. Uh, the, so I know at one point we were discussing not, there was the, I, I, not putting up the uh, like, go back to that rendering. Those, those, that, I guess, I don't know what that's called, but like, yeah, that retaining wall, whatever it is, so I, I, and all those trees behind it, I, 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 I feel this project does have that, correct?
This project that we're proposing tonight incorporates all of the elements that were part of the the bid, the base bid, as well as these uh monuments, uh, wayfinding signage.
Good, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, good, then I'll, then I'm all in, cause uh that, that's, that's very important for me, uh, in terms of the.
And that sculpture is not, is coming down, I hope, you know.
The Half Moon Bay?
Yeah.
The uh, the, the moon, um, we will be looking, when this is completed, we will be looking to find a suitable um location to to relocate that. We've, I've also spoken to the the artist's um son who lives in um down south, I think in Santa Barbara area, if I recall, but um, who is, who would be willing to take it back if we could not find a, uh, another place to put it, so we'll have to, we'll look at a couple of options, one maybe to to locate it in another park or location in the city, the other is uh perhaps to return it back to the family, I think. My understanding of the art.
Put it by the new pool, right?
Has died, so.
Return it to uh the um, unless to another city.
Ivan John's backyard would be good.
Why, why can't we put it with that big pumpkin sculpture?
Yeah.
Somebody trying to find a. It's gonna need a friend.
I don't think it's in the room at Cameron's.
MacDutra Plaza, it's the way to uh kind of make it humorous.
Yeah, we, I, I have looked at, I obviously, um, we, Kitty Fernandez is a, the round.
Kitty Fernandez, exactly.
Is certainly a place, and I think cleaning it up, it it would look a lot better, but um, I know it's lovingly referred to as the hot sticker by many, so.
So maybe, maybe the um, the jail barn museum, you know, like an old sculpture museum, old Half Moon Bay sculpture museum.
Everybody likes old sculptures. Yeah, I got a quick comment.
In the, in the television business, you, you're, you're like stretching the time to get, to get to the, to that continued item.
That's right.
Just stretch.
You know, just a.
Is there any public comment on this?
I didn't think there was, I looked, but.
Oh, good.
Um, just a quick comment before we move on any kind of motion, um, I just really want to give it up for John and Maz for um securing that we got that four hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, paid an extra forty-five thousand, that's a return of like ten to one. Really doesn't get better than that in terms of um the CPI project, I remember you mentioned that, and we do have to, it's nice to report a real success here, being that we are having to cut a lot of capital improvement pieces, and the way um, you and your team pulled this out, you two guys is actually fantastic, it's a big win, so thank you.
Bravo, thank you.
It is a big win, thanks for pointing that out, Robert, that's actually, that's, you're right on.
And I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge uh Ray um Rosavi, uh, who has been project managing this, and uh Ray has really built um a tremendous relationship with um with the folks at SMCTA. And um really, I, you know, Maz and Ray are really, um, you know, the, the reason for for that and the relationships they've built and and the willingness, and I, I, I really, I cannot thank SMCTA staff, um, and ultimately the board and the, and also the advisory committee for for um, for moving this along and the importance of this project. Um, and it's a long way from where we started a couple of years ago where they were threatening to defund the project, so.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Major step forward in terms of being able to make this happen, improve bicycle safety, improve the aesthetic, um, and um also have their support and additional financial support, so.
Yeah, no, please extend our gratitude on our behalf to Ray, and having a great project manager, you're right, is really the key to any great project working and moving forward, so thanks for.
Also benefit from the gateway signage, I think they're gonna be thrilled with that.
Right. I agree, I agree. All right, let's move this along. Um, motion time.
I'd like. Staff recommendation?
Second.
Excellent, uh, may we do a roll call vote? Uh, I'm gonna do it.
Council member Penrose?
Yeah, there you go.
Council member Robert?
Yes.
Council member Ruddy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
It passes five votes.
All right, we are gonna go back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, if we can, if I can ask for uh, say, a six minute recess, Catherine and Jessica and Matthew are finishing touches on the revisions that would be necessary to carry out your direction. So if you can uh call for a short break, we'll have something to show you in uh five or seven minutes.
Perfect. Let's get the eleven forty, let's come back at eleven forty, let's vote this thing, let's go to sleep.
All right.
I'm tired. Yeah. Yeah.